Jamie, you haven't heard from Maria, have you?
Uh, she will be joining us shortly.
Okay.
And I did get a chance to speak with Amy.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Susan.
Susan.
Hello, it's like deja vu all over again.
Sorry, missed you all the other night. I think I completely zoned out. I checked and said, oh, look, there's no meeting tonight. And then I heard the next day that they were to meet you, so.
Well.
They could probably give you the video if you want to watch.
Good.
I'm surprised you haven't watched it already. Oh, here's Maria.
Was it a long meeting?
Didn't the board make a motion to have Paul Jordan do all the meetings?
I think he signed up for the next technical review.
There you go. Happy to do it.
All right, we'll bring in Pam and Maria. We can get spotted here.
Sorry about missing you on the email, Paul.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay. Maria's here. Okay, Jay, are we ready?
Yes, we are.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the South Kingston Planning Board. This is a special regular meeting. The date is Thursday, February 11th. The time is 7:02. First item on our agenda is roll call. Pam, if you'd like to take the role.
Absolutely. Paul Jordan.
I am here.
Steve Demasi.
I'm here too.
Joe Murphy.
Here.
Susan Axelrod.
Here.
Maria Mack.
Here.
Pam Rubenoff, here. And then we have our illustrious staff. We have Jamie.
As in?
We have Jay.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Rich Bourbonay.
Here.
And Amy Guine's Special Legal Counsel.
This is Amy. I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Pam. All right, we have one item on our agenda tonight. It's a conceptual master plan, major land development, comprehensive permit for the Mattoonik Beach Road condominiums. Before I turn it over to the applicant, any comments from staff? Jay, I know we had some correspondence.
You were forwarded a piece of correspondence that planning staff received yesterday. There was also some revised plans that were just to board members yesterday and placed on the website. There is, we did, late today, we did receive another version of the revised plan today that I believe I'll be showing this evening. It's the same plan with a cross-sectional image on the bottom of the page, so it really isn't anything substantially new that you guys are missing, but.
Jay, this is Amy. So, um, let's just confirm for the public. If you have the agenda and it's hyperlink, it should be hyperlink, no matter if you got it from Secretary of State or the town's website or clerk base, but if you click that hyperlink where it says Mattoonik Beach Road condominiums, you'll be taken to the page on the website that has all the all the relevant documents, including the revised site plan. It's, it's right up at the top. It says revised submission to for 2021. So you're saying the version of the plan that you received, was it today or? So the latest version of the site plan is not the one on the website, but you're saying it's not substantially different?
I believe the only difference in that plan is a horizontal, horizontal cross-section of the element that's in the bottom right corner that is not on the planning board, the plans that were posted two days ago.
Okay, so except for the cross-section, the revised site plan that's on the planning boards, that's on this, this page, that's the, that's the same plan. So if the public wants to review it, if they haven't yet in advance of the meeting, they can bring that up. And I think it would be helpful for the applicant to start their presentation with explaining what's different between the old plan and the new plan, what's different and what's the same. And on that note, this is still a public hearing. We've had multiple nights of public hearings. I think what's going to be most helpful to the planning board tonight will be comments from the public that address the impact of the plan revisions. The one thing the public will notice about the revised site plan is the density is the same, right? It's still 12 units. That hasn't changed. The layout has changed. So to the extent that the public wants to offer comments about density, I think, you know, unless you haven't had a chance to comment at the three or four previous meetings we've had, I think the most helpful comments for the board tonight will be comments that are focused on the, the changes, the revisions to the plan.
And it would also be helpful to clarify, I mean, I had two versions of two plans on my screen today, trying to look at them. One was received February 8th, the other one was February 9th, and it was a little confusing and a little late to be getting revisions to a plan with two days to really look at them. Just wanted to make that statement.
And again, for the record, the correspondence Jay was referring to was dated February 9th, 2021, and was a memorandum from Vincent Murray. So the staff did distribute that to everyone. We are in receipt of it. So having said that, if there's no further staff comments, I'll turn it over to the applicant, Mr. D. Simone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Michael Resnick, on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined today by our engineer, Mr. Duhamel, as well as the applicant, Stephen D. Simone. The last time we were before you was early January. We just had come from the Conservation Commission and got a positive recommendation from them. At that time, I think that the board, as well as the applicant, had had minimal time to look at the draft motion that had been prepared. So we appreciated the opportunity to review it in a more specific manner. And right after that diligently, my client, Mr. Duhamel, in connection with the planning staff, worked together closely to create a substantially revamped plan. So of course, I will let Mr. Chris Duhamel start, explain to the members of the board as well as the public how that plan differs, and I think that that would be a good place to start. So, Mr. Duhamel, if you could explain the genesis of the changes and where we are today.
Sure, thank you. Chris Duhamel with Dupree Engineering. We had met with the, with the town planner and the town engineer and on a meeting after we received the, the draft conditions for approval to really understand what was being asked. And it was a very helpful meeting. Initially, it's, it was going to be, it was thought it would be a significant change. It actually is a significant change, but, but the same components are all in place. The same length of road, the same number of units. We addressed other concerns that the planning board had raised of overflow parking on grass surfaces to have individual denitrification systems for each duplex having six septic systems rather than one combined septic system. So those, all those commitments were, were made. Decrease in stormwater runoff, discharge in volume to the westerly boundary to reduce the flooding as much as we can do on our site to that low area. That's still very much in place. What's changed is to, you know, work with the town planner on, on creating better buffers to the northerly and southerly properties, existing properties. And that was first considered to relocate the roadway driveway from the southerly boundary to, to have it snake up to the northerly boundary, have the same width of road, the same sidewalk, same length, and same drainage system. But to route it to the northerly boundary to give more, more of a buffer to the south. And what, what also was done was to relocate the units to make them smaller and to, and to have them incorporate instead of a 45-foot length to have it 26-foot length and a 10-foot garage, so 36-foot, it's almost a 10-foot reduction. There's, there's a height component to that, and that's why it was asked of us to have the, have the cross-section drawn. But it's a smaller unit that fits better on this, on this site, and allows, allows for a 15-foot buffer to the south. That'll be an enhanced buffer. It'll, it'll have what was promised previous, a solid fence and a, and a landscape buffer. Mr. Carter's landscape plan will have to be revised if, if this is ultimately approved. It has a buffer to the north, the same 6-foot solid fence that will run along the property to, to the jurisdiction, the, the end of the development area, so that there wouldn't be any cut through that we heard was a possibility in the, in the public hearings. So we'll continue the, the fence well beyond the, the, any parking that we're proposing. In that area, we'll have, that's 15 feet of, of width. It'll have a section of it to be parallel parking, which, which is enhanced for the units. The parking is actually more accessible to each unit. And it'll have landscaping, enhanced landscaping in between the parallel parking and denser, denser landscaping from the parking to the 6-foot fence. So that 7-foot area of landscaped area would be, be enhanced more. The 6-foot fence, if you, if you look at the cross-section that was drawn to illustrate this plan that was sent on Monday, it was, it was felt that a cross-section should be drawn to give a better scale of what, what we're looking at. To the, to the left is the Holden Road neighborhood, the, the property boundary having a solid 6-foot fence. 7-foot minimum over is a landscaped area with a, with a parallel parking, 8-foot in width. Trees that would be built in between the parallel parking and enhanced trees that would be built in the 7-foot area as well. It shows a canopy, canopy of shading of the, of the parking area and masking the parking areas. Next is the 20-foot roadway, which was always proposed. Adjacent to that, it's a 5-foot sidewalk for, for pedestrian access up and down the driveway. And then to the face of the buildings, the buildings are now, again, 26-foot wide, but they're staggered to give a more architectural design to it. The planner felt strongly that more, more attention should be made to the, the type of buildings that are being proposed. The, the decks, they, they used to be facing, always facing south, but now the decks are in the backyard, so that this, there's more privacy with the deck from the, from the travel, the sidewalks and the parking and all. And then lastly, there's a 15-foot buffer to the Mary Carpenter land with the, with the same 6-foot fence and the, and the dense plantings that, that would provide a buffer to the Mary Carpenter land. So this, this was worked out with the town engineer and the town planner. Some of the delay was to redesign the, the units themselves to make certain that they were, you know, they would fit. And once they gave me that, that footprint, I was able to revise the, the, the site plan readily. It's not a big change, if you will, to what was assumed with the drainage, with the infiltration, with the location of the septic fields. So that if, it's much, much more enhanced, a better plan from, I believe, the abutters' point of view and the client's point of view. The, the overflow parking is, is a grass parking at the entrance. It'll be graded anyways, so that it doesn't have to be roped off or put with, with with the car stops. It's just an area that if, if it becomes, you know, desirous, that, that can be utilized for parking. Grass pavers or reinforced turf, anything of that nature that would not rut and be allowed for, for parking. So it, those are the changes that, that were done, again, in the, in the spirit of trying a advantageous plan to, to help for greater buffers from what was previously being reviewed by the planning, planning commission. And you know, we're happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Maria, excuse me, Pam.
So, Mr. Duhamel, just for clarification for those that might not be looking at the plan, am I correct to say that the access road has been, has been changed from the south to the north edge? And there's a solid fence between the road as, and the adjacent neighborhood to the north in addition to landscaping. Is that correct?
Yes, the fence is on the property line and all the landscaping is on the, on the project side of the fence.
So that there will no, there will not be an access road on the Mary Carpenter's side. There will be a, I believe, a chain link fence and vegetation on the south side of budding Mary Carpenter's, and there will be a full fence on the north side with landscaping as well, with the road.
Yes, well, the road, moving to, I should have acknowledged that the road did move from the south boundary to the north boundary.
Okay.
And, and the, and the, the buffers were increased and enhanced landscaping.
Thank you, just for those people that aren't looking at an image.
Okay. Paul?
Yeah, that's Paul Jordan. Mr. Duhamel, there was also a question last meeting about how you would handle the drainage under the road, and I can't remember the specifics of that. I think the chairman had raised the issue. Steve, do you remember?
I think we had discussed whether they were going to use solid concrete basins if they were going to put the drainage under the road.
To be truthful, I'd like, I'd like the chance to work with the GM and the town engineer on that. I, I understand that there's a desire to have storm tech units, and I'm going to incorporate those where I can at a low point. I, I believe I still need some infiltration and drainage. And it, it will, I don't think that area would incorporate a storm tech chamber. Everything that's proposed will meet H20 loads of tractor trailer will be able to drive on these and not crush the, the structures. So that's something I've got a lot more work to do on, and I would, I would need to present that to the, to the town engineer and the, the DM, CRM C.
Thank you.
Susan.
This is Susan. Could I go back to the last image that you projected, the cross-section, which I don't think I've seen before?
That was drawn today.
No, not that, the, the cross-section. Yes, the bottom part of that. Okay, so this to me looks like a two-story building with the deck on the first floor, but the last plans I saw were a three-story building with the deck on the second floor. Am I not reading this correctly?
I defer to our client, Steve D. Simone.
Stephen, can you speak to that, please?
Hi, Stephen D. Simone here. Yes, I can speak to that. The cross-sectional depiction was drawn by Chris, and it's a two-scale representation of the height of the buildings, which is 32 feet. The design of the buildings are such that it appears, it has the appearance of a two-story building with dormers on the third floor to make up for the drastic decrease in square footage by increasing the buffers to both the north and the south of this project. We felt that we had to unfortunately utilize more square footage, so the buildings did increase in size slightly. But in order to keep them as short as possible, as you know, we're allowed 35 feet. We're depicting 32, which will be the height of the buildings because we are moving away from full basements, which we really wanted, but slab-on-grade allows for a lower profile of the building because we don't have floor joists on the first floor, and we don't, we're not required to show as much concrete, or we wouldn't show as much concrete, so. And that, I hope that answers your question a little?
Sort of, not really. Is the, is the deck on the second floor or on the first floor?
The, oh, sorry, the deck is on the second floor, so that deck should have been higher on this. You're, you're spot on with that, yes.
Okay, so the cross-section that I'm looking at, the preliminary plans that we received yesterday show, it looks like a solid phase three-story building from the side view. That's not?
This, this is not quite accurate. It's really, for height purposes, more than, I mean, this isn't an architectural drawing. This is an engineer drawing, drawing that he drew today. And I, I mean, he did the best he could with the time constraints we have. If you'll remember, I mean, we, we got this input less than a month ago, so this has been our, we're, we're on the rush here, trying to get this in.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Mr. D. Simone, can you just clarify that your footprint of each building is smaller to, to make a better buffer, but you've gone up in height?
Yes, that, that's accurate.
You may have a little more square footage with the dormers, but your, your footprint is smaller. I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, it's significantly smaller. It's actually more than 50% smaller, I believe, or just about. It's, it's 20 feet smaller. I mean, it's, it's significant. And the height has only increased by five feet. So it's really, and the, the square footage is about the same. There's still two bedrooms. They're a little different, but the numbers are about the same.
Okay, thank you. Any other board, Joe, did you have any comments? Maria? Okay.
I, I have.
Go ahead, Pam.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. So the ultimate height of the building is what above ground?
Now 32 feet.
Thank you. Do you have an idea of what the average height of, of the houses to the north are?
I do not, but I know we're allowed to go up to 35 feet. We were previously at 27 above foundation, which means we were really at 28 and a half, 29 feet. So the, the 3 feet is not significant, in my opinion, when you consider that the overall footprint has been significantly reduced. I mean, the buildings are much thinner, so that, you know, it's a, it's a more appealing subdivision with larger buffers to both the north and the south.
Thank you, Mr. D. Simone.
Does the applicant have anything else to add at this moment, at this point?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I, I actually would like to, to thank the planning staff for their input, and I'd like to thank everybody's patience with any technical issues. As I said, we are on a tight schedule here.
If there's no more questions from staff or members, I will.
Mr. Chairman, Jamie Rabbit?
Yes, Jamie.
Just one question that, if the applicant's representative can just go over. Originally, as presented a month ago, there were two 12-space parking lots. If he can just touch on the revisions to those designs where it appears one was eliminated and one was reduced, and how that was accomplished with actually increasing your parking?
Okay.
I could, I could address that if I'm not on mute.
Chris.
We, we had, we had a 12. We had revised the, the, the initial submission of the, of the, the 12 units and, and there was a central septic system on that plan. We had taken that central septic system out, we moved the units in closer. We put individual septic systems that would serve each, each each duplex, and with that, a gained area for a parking, parking site, a 12-unit parking site. By moving the road to the north, to the Holden Road boundary, it, it, it allowed for to eliminate that parking, that, that sea of parking, and to spread it out over a greater area, so that there's, there was 12, 12 spots there with another six spots, 18. So now we have 16 spots in that, that general area and more grass space in that general area. So it helped open up more grass, green, landscaped areas.
Thank you, Chris. All right, why don't we go to our attendees? And we'll take some questions from them. Jay, I think our first one, Andy Keller had had her hand up first originally, and we spoke to her. So why don't we bring her in first, and then we'll, we'll move down the list. Go ahead, Andy. Please identify yourself, please.
My name is Andrea, Andrea Kelleher, and I am at 73 Holden Road.
Okay.
Um, so I have, there's going to be a 6-foot fence. We are going to be abutting the majority of these buildings our home is. So I have some questions about, first of all, the 6-foot fence that is going to be between the road and parking spaces and our properties on Holden Road. That's a 6-foot fence, and there, it looks as like though there's some vegetation between the parking spaces. What is the expected impact of noise with the road now being on this side of the unit? I have, I have quite a few questions, but that's one. I don't know if you want me to outline my question first.
Why don't you go through your questions, and then we'll have the applicant answer them.
Okay. So that's that. You answered the question about the height difference. I would, I also have that same question and concern about how is this comparable to the homes on our street, on the abutters homes, as far as the percentage of homes that have a 32 to 35-foot height as when we are trying to keep in keeping with the character of the area. So I'd like to have that kind of an answer or that into consideration, because I do not believe that the majority of the homes have that type of a height. As far as the other aspect of the character of the community, this was originally a cottage look to make it blend with the community. To me, this looks like a condo complex and a dense condo complex. And I know you didn't want to have us bring up concerns about density, but when you look at lot size, you basically have three units on one lot, when you look at how close these are together. I don't know what that does for noise. I don't know what that does between the height and the compactness of this. It certainly is not attractive. It definitely looks like a condo complex, not like a cottage in the village of Mattoonik to me. And I don't think that that is what is intended in the village plan for this town. Compacted, that my, and my final concern is this rendition now has, you say that it has the, basically the same amount of rooms. However, when you look at the layout of this, we now have two bedrooms and a study, and the study is the exact same size as the bedrooms, even though you may be calling it a study. This certainly looks like it's going This certainly looks like it's going to be a third bedroom to me, um, which is of concern. Because this layout certainly poses itself and presents itself as more of a condo unit that's going to have people in and out as a rental. Uh, and yeah, that, that, that study certainly looks like it's going to be easily converted into a bedroom for whoever's in there. And now you're looking at a three bedroom, essentially. I know that on paper you can do things like not put a closet in there. But certainly the layout lends itself to much differently from a, somebody's living in this home and a cottage area to a more of a definite, uh, condo complex feel. And those are my, my concerns.
Uh, Mr. Resnick, can you, uh, answer some of those questions or direct them to you?
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Um, a- as to the architectural concern, the layout concern, uh, Stephen, could you address that? And could you address the, the distinction between, um, the image that's depicted now and the architectural conceptual plans you put together?
Uh, yes, so, uh, as I've been in contact with the planning department, uh, they've informed me, uh, that you guys are working on a new cottage. Uh, like zoning type of plan. Uh, so we're going to try and pull some ideas from that as we go forward. Uh, like I said, this is a draft architectural plan. This is not the final plan. Um, given the amount of time, we, we literally redesigned everything. Um, I mean, this, this took some work and this took some doing. And you'll see on the plan, um, that we have submitted now, it's one building straight across. And even on this, uh, engineered plan, you can see that we've already added a two foot jog in every building to make them look less monolithic. Uh, we're also thinking about adding covered porches in the front, uh, to give it more of a cottage feel and break up the shed dormer on the back of the building, um, to also lend it to more of a smaller seaside community style. Um, but it, this is a, a fairly common building plan in coastal communities. Uh, they're very similar buildings in East Mattoonik. Uh, there are taller buildings, significantly taller buildings in Mattoonik. Uh, again, I didn't go out and measure any of your houses on Holden Road, but, uh, I can do that before the next meeting if you'd like. Um, we're, we're trying to, to maintain a cottage look and we're, it's a work in progress. So we're hoping that we can achieve a look that's satisfactory to, uh, to us, our buyers and the neighbors.
Thank you, Stephen, uh, Mr. Chairman. And, and I would also, um, uh, re- remind the caller that this is a master plan at conceptual stage. And, um, as, uh, my client moves into the design and preparing for preliminary application, we're going to see some more refining with respect to the cottage, uh, style look and some of the architectural features that he, uh, had referenced, uh, and then also working, uh, with the planning department to develop that based on some of the new, uh, policies, uh, that may be put in place. Um, Mr. Dewey Hamel, uh, there was, uh, actually before getting to the noise concern, I would just also say that while we don't have any numbers relative to the, uh, the building height and the surrounding areas, other than, uh, Mr. De Simone's testimony, we are within the dimensional regulations, um, and, uh, I, uh, turn to Dewey Hamel to discuss, uh, the noise issue that was, uh, raised, uh, by the caller.
I, I can, um, I can state that the the driveway is moving closer to the Holden properties, so there is a potential for noise without question. Um, I would just, I would just look at this, um, and point out that we are on a twenty foot wide roadway with, with, uh, everybody that is on that roadway knows each other. Um, so there's not going to be any speeding. There's not going to be high ti- tire noises like you might find, um, Mattoonik Beach Road. Um, the parking that we had proposed before, uh, was, was within the vicinity of the, uh, the north holding, uh, land. It was, was concentrated more with, uh, twelve spaces and twelve spaces, but now it's, it's spread out more. Um, so I, the six foot fence, um, serves as a, a muffling buffer. The, the vegetation serves as a muffling buffer, so I'm not going to say you're not going to hear, hear the cars or people, uh, walk, um, to their front, front gate. Um, but most of the activity is going to be to the south, uh, where, where, you know, the deck is and the landscape, uh, areas are. It, it's a great fit. I think the plant, the planters' suggestion, which we didn't come up with, I think is a, a much better design. And fits, fits well with these, with these units.
And I would also add that, um, as Mr. Dewey Hamel, uh, said earlier, we will have to have a revised landscaping plan. We do have John Carter and we can certainly work with community members and the staff in, uh, developing, uh, that vegetation, uh, to limit whatever sound there may be. Um, we'd be happy to do that.
Right, uh, did you get all her, uh, Andy's question, Andy's Keller's questions answered, Michael?
Uh, I believe, Mr. Chairman, uh, there was, uh, the noise issue that was raised. It was the height of the buildings, uh, and there was the, the layout, uh, the architectural style. Um, and I believe those were the three items, uh, that were raised.
Okay, thank you.
I did have the concern about, hello?
Yes.
Oh, I did have the concern about the potential of, um, I don't know if that has to do with the layout that, that study, the way that layout is as opposed to a foyer and an, an open space. I, I just want that to be on the record that I'm concerned about that. Um, and I do have a, um, question for the planning board. So is it, I, I guess I didn't understand, um, once we go past, the once there's a later stage. Um, if there is a later stage, the public has some kind of input as far as when design comes about. My understanding was that this is the only time that we have input to ask questions and concerns.
Now, you, you will have another public hearing at preliminary plan. And, you know, as such, uh, town of South Kingston doesn't have specific design plans. Uh, the board typically does ask the applicant, uh, to show a representation of what they're planning to do. We do, uh, do a little horse trading sometimes to, uh, to push a design in a direction we might want it to go. But it is a collaborative effort on the board's part and the applicant's part. Um, and again, um, when they make that presentation, I'm sure this board will ask, should this, uh, permit move forward? We were definitely at the, uh, first meeting of our, the preliminary plan review. We'd probably want to see an architectural rendering, um, just to, uh, you know, take that off the table of, of as a concern and have it upfront, what we're look, talking about and what we might expect to see.
Okay, thank you.
But you will have another shot if this moves forward. Uh, there will be more public hearings.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yep.
All right, Jay, I think the next, uh, hand up was, uh, Deborah Gerton. Go ahead, Deborah, unmute. There you go.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can, please just identify yourself.
I'm, I'm Deborah Gerton and I live at twenty seven Holden Road.
Okay.
And, um, I have quite a few questions. Um, I don't know if I want to reel them first or if I want to just tackle them one at a time.
I, I think I, yeah, instead of the back and forth, if you, uh, you know, ask your question and then the applicant's, uh, attorney or the applicant will direct, uh, who on his staff he wants to answer those questions.
Okay. Um, I just, I just yesterday, uh, like actually this morning, looked at the new plans. And, um, my, my biggest concern is, is I don't know if, um, Mr. De Simone or any of the, um, engineers, um, I, I, I feel that they're not taking any regard for the fact that, for whatever reason, we bought the house thirty five years ago and it is pushed back. I live at twenty seven. My house pushes back all the way, um, to the property line. Um, and every time I look at the plans, I have a fence running right across the back of my house. Um, I don't think anyone realizes that I have no basement access to my house. The only way I can get into my basement is through my, the, the jet out pot that sticks out in the back of my house. That's where the, uh, basement door is. So at this point in time, I can't go down into laundry because I have a fence sticking right there. So that's a big concern for me and I, I, um, I thought the other plans seemed to have the fence stop and I thought it was okay. But now again, the fence is running across and my deck is actually squared off even with the back of the house. So if I'm sitting on my deck, I'm now can put my glass on the, on the, uh, fence from what I can see. So that needs to be addressed. I did talk to my lawyer this morning and, um, we have concerns. So that's ma- my main concern and I, I also don't understand why this detention pond is now pushed back with all the water problems that I have brought forward to you with taking hours of my time to get pictures and, and data and whatnot to you. Um, the detention pond is now pushed back further into our backyards. And Linda and I and across the street, the other two houses have sub pumps and whatnot in our basements because of all this water. And it looks like they've just relocated everything and shove parking there and push the, um, retention pond back. So that's a big concern. Because again, if this water ends up in my basement, I'm not going to be happy.
Okay. I'm, Mr. Resnick?
Sure, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, a- as to the, uh, the setback issue, um, I'll let Mr. Dewey Hamel discuss what setbacks we've, uh, have on our property. But I will note with respect to the caller that her property is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. It was certainly built, uh, prior to the zoning code. Um, and, uh, that's why, uh, it's, uh, approaching, um, the side yard setback in that manner. So, uh, I'll let Mr. Dewey Hamel speak to, um, the constraints, uh, of our development. Um, but it's really all I can say about that issue. Uh, we'd certainly be happy to work with her, uh, with respect to that buffer and, uh, perhaps, uh, augmenting the fence in some way if possible. Um, however.
How about not putting a fence? I really don't want to look at a fence.
Mr. Dewey Hamel, uh, can you speak about the buffer that we have in place and the setbacks that we have for the property relative to, uh, our structures and their footprints?
Uh, certainly, the, the fence was, um, was put in, I believe, at the request of, of a number of residents, if we want to.
I get that, but they have hun- like twenty five feet of dead property at the back of their house to this fence. I don't. I ha- I, I have, I, I, I really don't like this. I mean, this is just not, not nice. It's not being nice to me.
Yeah, so we can work with, uh, landscape architect and, and, and you and the town on, uh, the placement of that fence. And the, in the drainage, uh, you know, we had committed to expanding that low point to having more, more storage that would, would, uh, help your property, uh, take, take water from Holden Street, your property and keep moving it, um, with a, with a greater capacity onto this property. So that part.
Do you see, do you see how close this pond, the detention pond is to my basement? I mean, you're bringing it into my yard more.
Yeah, not necessarily. It, it exists there currently, so. I'm, I'm making.
Every day. It's only when it rains it rises.
Yeah, of course. That's the only time.
Now you're putting water there every day.
Uh, Deborah, let, let's, let the engineer explain what he's trying to do.
Okay.
I mean, we, we know you have a water issue there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the applicant at preliminary stage has to provide, um, detailed analysis that that detention pond will work and that they cannot increase water flow across the property. So I mean, some of these things can't be answered at preliminary. And if they can't do it, then they've got to modify the, uh, the size of the development or the site. It's, but that's something that can't be absolutely determined until preliminary. But I mean, obvi- we, we know you have a problem. Um, it's well documented. And the board is fully aware of it. The staff is fully aware of it.
Okay. Um.
And nothing's changed from the last testimony. Uh, we're not discharging to that area where, we're draining that area, so. It's not a t- typical detention pond, if you will, where, where we collect the water, we discharge it to one low area. That's not what we're doing here.
So where are you putting it? That's what I, I, you haven't ever answered that question. You keep saying you're going to put it here. You haven't said where it's going.
It's going in the ground.
But there's water in the ground.
We're infiltrating it.
Where, though? I don't understand. Maybe I'm just, uh, I mean, I've done a lot of my homework. I've talked to Coastal Resources and D E M. But there's no, with, the water is the water. The water is under there. It's only two feet under there in this area here. We're developing it. It's more for four and more feet, but it's only two feet. Dig two feet down, you're going to hit water. So where are you putting this water?
So I'm infiltrating where, where the water table is eight feet or better. Um, there's a watershed, um, three acre watershed thereabouts that drains to that low area and then above, above, uh, Holden Street, there's another watershed that drains to your site. I can't do anything with that, but on our site, we can infiltrate before it even gets to your, to your low area. And then, so I'm taking that water out and then I'm creating more of a storage area for the water that, uh, that would pond on your southerly boundary and allow that to come onto this site and to then be, uh, discharged. And, and it'll all be less volume, less, less, uh, rate than what presently drains to the south. So that, that's the commitment that we've made.
Okay. Now also.
Regulations.
Okay, and I have another, um, concern. And I don't know if anyone's thought of this, but, um, at the top of Holden Road, we have the bump, the big hump. And that hump, which one of the, um, I think a couple of the planners went down, um, during one of our big heavy rainstorms. And they did remark that the town put that there and it's really doing its job. It's pushing with the water, it's holding back the water coming from the other development that was put in years ago. So that water comes down Holden, um, Mattoonik Beach Road and it used to come pouring down our street. So the town put the bump on there, which is a nightmare, but we've learned to live with it because it's doing its job. It's taking a lot of the water and it's pushing it down and it just disperses it down, which is kind of not really a good thing, but my thing is, is if you open up the curb and to put this road in, where is that water going to go? It's going to come pouring down your new road, which is going to add to the back portion of the water that we're already dealing with. And I don't know if anyone's even thought of that.
Uh, we, we have thought of it and, and those details aren't on this plan, um, but there's certainly one of the thoughts when I was.
Mm-hmm, because I know it's not your problem. It's not.
I noticed how the town.
Please, okay.
When I was doing inventory of the, of the drainage in this area, I noted how the town had, had channeled that larger watershed away from Holden Street. And that was a, that was well thought out, a good thing, and I want to make sure that it continues on this design.
And what is your plan, though, for that?
It'll, it'll come out in the preliminary plan stage.
Okay. Um, what are the plans for garbage removal? Are they a private garbage removal? Are they going to have dumpsters?
Mr. Chairman, if, if you can, if, Mrs. Gerton.
Yes.
West could ask all of her questions so that the applicant could have the person respond to the questions in orderly manner.
Okay, so the garbage was another thing. I didn't know if they were going to have private like we do or if they're going to put dumpsters. And where are the dumpsters going to be placed if that's the case?
Okay, and any, any further questions after that?
Um, and also at the end of the road, there's going to be a detention pond. Um, where is that water going to be piped? Um, is it going to be piped into that marshland? Um, and is, if so, um, are they taking provisions to clean the water and make sure that because of the pond, that water feeds into the pond that we also have issues with? Um, are we going to be deteriorating and, and, you know, creating another nightmare down there? That was another issue I had. Um, and also I was wondering if we did hire, um, the town had mentioned last meeting that we were going to do our own private engineer to go over all the density tests and the thirty one dot mile an hour quote, um, speed limit down Mattoonik Beach Road and it go over and do our own studies. And has that been done?
Okay, thank you. And go ahead, Mr. Resnick or Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Dewey Hamel, can you address the additional drainage issue that was raised by Ms. Gerton? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Duhem, can you address the additional drainage issue that was raised by Ms. Gerton?
Yes, certainly. The the drainage on the east portion of the site, there's a high point about seven hundred feet in um around uh unit six or seven. And from that area uh east, it'll drain towards the uh the tidal swamp. The CRMC requires that water quality improvements be made within that within that watershed. That one point two inch of rainfall over the roadway, over the impervious roofs, walkways, sidewalks, parking areas, that that be intercepted and filtered uh before discharge. Um, that's the only requirement that's needed uh to discharge to the east. There's no requirement as we have on the west where we have a have to mitigate increase in volume and increase in runoff rate. Um, so it is a different watershed with with um different criteria required by the CRMC. Um, there's no garbage uh dumpster areas. Uh, they're all roll-offs in the in the uh in the in the driveways of the unit um unit side side roads. I believe they're going to be under the porch. Um, Stephen can speak closer to that and you know.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Duhem. Well, Stephen, could you speak to um where the garbage receptacles will be placed? And uh speak to the HOA that will be established?
Absolutely. So uh we've actually thought about the garbage. There won't be any dumpsters. Everyone will have private receptacles, just like you have on Holden Road. Uh, we will have be fencing them in underneath the rear decks. So every unit will have one or two garbage cans in a fenced-in area under the deck uh to screen them from view. And the trash pickup will be uh handled by the HOA. So that, you know, nobody has a bunch of full trash cans sitting there not getting picked up. Um, and I also wanted to speak briefly about the fence. I know we we originally didn't have it behind your house and put it there um to stop the cut-throughs. I'm, we're definitely gonna work with you on this. I actually expressed the same concern uh about your back door uh to Jamie Rabbit when I met with him um recently. So we talked about possibly giving you um some kind of small easement so that you can and and moving that part of the fencing. Um, I promise to get with you about this. I'd like to talk to you about it and uh, you know, we're gonna explore our options with our engineers and our landscape uh designer uh to remedy that problem because obviously you can't get into your basement and uh that is not a good thing, so.
Thank you.
Can we turn the road back a little bit so that it's not so square? I mean, the site looks like this cause parked right at my just because I'm so far back, I under- the plans are great, but I just don't, it just seems like it's just right there. Could we just kind of re-figure it a little bit to give me a little bit of of um common courtesy, so I'm not looking at cause and.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I actually, the reason the road was on the other side on the original design was specifically because of your house. I I'm gonna be totally honest with you. That's why I put that road there. Um, and this is better and your your setback from the road from the back of your house, my setback to the driveway is fifteen feet. So at the back of your house, you're gonna be closer to twenty feet from the parking spaces. So it it's actually much further away from the property lines than we originally designed it also, even on the the southerly board. So both sides, you end up with a a slightly bigger buffer. I know your buffer got a little smaller because we had to turn the road. But um, like I said, I really want to work with you on this because I've honestly been thinking about your house since I got this property under contract, which feels like forever ago, but I I'm I'm going to work with you on this. I promise you that.
Okay. Um.
Let's uh.
Okay, that's it then for me so far. But could I call you, um, Mr. De Simone, if I have um any other issues? Uh, or could I meet you uh or have you come to, you know, and meet with one of my family? Cause I live in Florida right now, so. Um, but I could. And show you what we deal with and how to get in there and stuff and what we're dealing with.
Absolutely. Yes, I I'd love to talk to you about it.
Um, come up with something, cause I just don't want to have a fence sticking right there. It's just not fair to me.
I don't blame you at all. Um, I don't know how to do this. Maybe Jamie could email you my info. If he has your info, I'm sure you've emailed the town.
Mm-hmm. I think I've talked to Jay, but um.
I imagine I can't.
Staff and they can arrange uh either an email address or a phone number from Mr. De Simone.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Our next hand is Karen Swoboda.
Hi, sorry, it's taken me a moment to unmute. Can you hear me now?
We can. Just please identify yourself.
Great. Uh, I'm Karen Swoboda. My husband and I own the property at sixty-eight Holden Road. Um, so a couple of things are on my mind. First of all, I'm just just um, this is maybe a little bit picky and off the subject, but I don't want to be told you had to do plans on the quick when we have been coming to meetings for months now about this. This is really critically important to people along this area. Um, and frankly, you're in business, so I don't want to hear that you had to do things, you know, it was a burden for you. My biggest concern right now is that we have essentially built a wall on the lower part of Holden Road that will essentially have everybody from my next door neighbor over um to the east looking at a solid wall of basic condo units. On top of that, at the back end of my neighbor's property, there are going, there's a series of two car spots for each unit. There are fifty-eight total parking spaces for twelve units. That is more than four, close to five parking spaces per unit. I don't understand why a two-bedroom unit would necessitate four or five parking spaces. Now, I know some are are grass overflow at the very entrance, but there are far too many parking spaces for this not to turn into a rental situation with people coming and going. I I just, I think that you've put your cards and we're not stupid. We're seeing what's going on here. So could you explain to me why we have fifty-eight?
Karen, can we, can you just list your questions and then we'll have.
Yes. Why are there fifty-eight parking spaces?
Okay, was that, did you have any further questions or was that?
And why, and why have we compacted the unit so that the uh they are essentially building a solid wall at thirty or so feet, whatever, whatever you I know you went round and round about exactly how tall they are.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's let's take the parking um issue first. Uh, Chris, could you address um the parking spaces and and how they've uh evolved uh since we first uh uh applied in in working with the planning department?
Um, sure, by code, you need two spot parking spaces per unit. And then there was concern of having guest parking and then there was concern for overall parking. This was all evolving from the two or three, you know, lengthy meetings that we we had with the with the planning commission and with the with the public. And there was concern that uh if there wasn't room for an overflow parking on July fourth or what have you, that that they would park on Holden Street and and bottle up the the existing neighborhoods. Uh, and then they would cut through this property to get to get to uh the beach, so. We're showing areas that can be utilized as overflow parking. It's it's not to be striped or to be uh, you know, roped off or anything of that nature. It's areas that can be used uh in in the event of something, something that like that happens. And it was, it was only meant you know, we talked about the the quality of the of the design that uh Stevie Simone has put forth and and uh he's not trying to build a, you know, a college area. He's he's trying to build a cottage area and we didn't think that we needed overflow parking as much, but it's it's there's areas that serve it well and that's why we're showing it.
I I just, I have a hard time thinking about overflow. If we eliminated the eighteen quote-unquote overflow parking areas, we're still talking about close to four parking spaces per unit. It just seems like incredible overkill and it's an invitation um for people to um abuse a two-bedroom unit, um, which I think, you know, will happen. And then the neighbors will be left holding the bag on that. It's not in keeping with the with the with the plan of the neighborhood.
If I correct you, it averages the three point three spaces per unit. Um, what is being proposed, the forty units and then the eighteen overflow are just that. If that isn't sufficient enough, so it was a concern.
There are twelve units. Parking spaces. Not counting the overflow.
I'll I'll just jump in here. Uh, we originally designed it with two, with three units, with three parking spaces per unit. Uh, we were recommended to cut that down, back down to two units per parking space. Then at the next meeting, we were instructed to increase and add grass overflow parking so that no one, under any circumstance, including apparently barbecues on Fourth of July would park on Holden Road. That is why there's so much parking. Uh, if we're not trying to pull a fast one, I'm not trying to turn this into a rental property situation. This was at the direct request of people living on Holden Road in numerous meetings.
But you, your math is is funky because you are, you are at forty permanent parking spa- spots. Eighteen overflow in the grass area, forty permanent spots for twelve units.
Three.
That's the math of your plan. That's your plan.
Three point three spaces per unit is what's evolved. It might, it might be less when we're dealing with.
Everybody, let's, one person at a time. Karen, the applicant did respond to uh numerous people on Holden Roads concerned about parking. And the uh planning board asked them to consider um some overflow overflow parking. If you have a concern about that, it's noted. Uh, the planning members will discuss that.
Thank you. A related concern would be the increased traffic on the road that a potential of fifty-eight parking spots. I know that they did a traffic study, which uh was not necessarily done at the appropriate time of year. But if you start looking at fifty-eight potential cars leaving that space, um, I think we've got a real problem with the traffic study as well. That's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, uh, i- if I may, uh, we, one of the concerns that was raised was with respect to the sighting and spacing and aesthetic. Um, I think that.
I lost my lunch on them.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, should we continue with answering um the previous caller's uh inquiries?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I interrupt for a minute?
No, I'd like to speak, Mr. Chairman. And I'd like to do this one at a time because I think that this is turning into a cross-examination.
Okay, I I don't even know who spoke at that point, so go ahead. Mr. Resnick, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, the caller raised an additional issue with respect to the spacing and the sighting um in her aesthetic viewshed, and I think that Mr. De Simone can uh discuss that um and how these plans are gonna move uh into more refinement as we go into preliminary with respect to the cottage-esque design. Stephen?
Uh, yes, again, uh, we're going to try and incorporate more details from your upcoming cottage plan, uh, such as, uh, like I said before, a covered porch on the front of the buildings. And we added a jog in the middle of the building to break up the monolithic nature. And we also plan to um do something with the shed dormers on the back to make it appear more as though uh it's a two-story building with dormers, uh, smaller dormers. I'm sorry, I'm a little flustered here. Um, so we're going to continue to make it try to appear more cottage-like than the plan you see before you. Um, and I'm working with the planning department uh to make that happen.
And and Mr. Chairman, with respect to uh the traffic uh issue, uh, we've provided expert testimony. There is no traffic issue. There's absolutely nothing before this board that would suggest otherwise. Uh, at this stage in master plan, a traffic study for a twelve-unit development uh is already fairly aggressive. Um, and th- there's nothing before the board that would suggest there's any traffic issues uh based on these uh units. And if there's anything to add to that, Mr. Duhem, I'd open the floor to you.
Traffic studies are normally are always based on the use, the twelve duplexes and any potential uh guests that would visit. And and that analysis hasn't changed um by providing for potential overflow parking.
Okay, thank you. Jay, we bring in our next caller.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, may I uh say something real quick and?
Go ahead.
Um, a few minutes ago, uh, we had a caller Carol who attempted to speak. I I don't know what happened. She was inadvertently uh brought in as a panelist. During that confusion of who was talking, I demoted her to attendees. I just wanted to apologize to her. It was, she was inadvertently brought in and she was not deliberately kicked or removed for any other reason other than we were just trying to get order to the conversation.
Okay.
And if Carol, if Carol, if you'd like to ask a question, please feel free to raise your hand and we'll get to you uh uh in the order that they're received.
Thank you, Jay, and we'll bring in Erica Koch, please. Erica, if you can unmute yourself, you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Just identify yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Erica Koch. I live in one of the properties that is going to be affected by by this new plan. Um, we are now with this new plan, there are only three households that are going to be affected based on how how this is reconfigured with twelve units, six structures in our backyards. Um, many of the questions have been answered. I I have concerns that are not necessary. Some of the other questions have been answered or at least somewhat addressed by by the applicant. Um, I continue to be concerned about the the precedent from Matunic for having structures like this, especially now that they are not individual cottage little things here and there. They are now a huge unit of twelve, six buildings, now three stories. Thank you, Susan, for being articulate about the fact that they are in fact three stories. Because we all questioned, like, is this really what we're looking at? But it is. And then they may, they may not be huge, but they're not little cottages. Um, we are now going to have twelve balconies facing our street on our three pieces of property, which isn't exactly what we had in mind when we came to Adilic Matunic forty years ago. Um, the cottage style is not a cottage style when it's huge, when it's six structures that look like this all in a row. Um, I'm frustrated by the fact that it's so late when things get posted about the latest changes on this site. For those of us who like are following this and are coming to these meetings month after month, back in person when we were in person and now sitting Zoom meetings and finding out late and having to clarify, is this what I'm looking at? Is this what I'm looking at? What is it that we are really dealing with? It's frustrating and I just have to say that. It's not a question. It's just, I want to put that out there for anybody who is being a part of this and is on the planning committees and whatever committees are looking at this. And I have to ask, what, what are the next stages? Is this, every time I come to these meetings, is this the one that's really like the deciding factor? Is this the one? Is it the next one? Who ultimately is going to decide? When are we going to know what our future is in Matunic? So I guess that's pretty much what I have to ask and what I want to know about. And also, my my last thing is, for all of us in Matunic who have been limited by our plot size and what we are allowed to do, how is it that suddenly this piece of land can have all of these structures on that piece of land where most of us can't put an addition on a house without going through an act of God to make that happen? Suddenly, we've got all of these things in this relatively small plot of land. If this is a precedent from Matunic, I am really, I really think you all should think about what the future is for South County. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Steve. We have to make a decision by um. Steve, we have to make a decision by February 26th or 23rd, I believe, at our next meeting. Our next regular scheduled meeting at the end of the month.
And what is that decision? What, what decision do you need to?
We're, we're taking, we still have a public hearing open. We haven't made a decision. We're taking public comments still.
Okay, but after 20, after that
Let me just speak.
Okay.
The planning board and staff, we're all frustrated with Zoom meetings. It's very difficult to hold a meeting, to see who's in attendance, to see the expressions, to see the body language. You know, thi- this isn't easy for anyone. And I don't want you to think we're trying to shut you out. If anything, the public has more information available to them now because of Zoom meetings, because everything is posted and linked to the agenda. We used to give handouts that up when we had a public meeting before on what was going on. So you actually have better availability of of information now. Granted, some of it comes in late and staff does their best to post it and get it to planning board members. But I mean, this meeting, this whole application, I, we've probably spent 15 hours of public hearings on this already. So, I mean, we're not trying to shy away or not have a hearing. It's, if anything, it's getting more airtime now than it would have if we were in public and had this on a regular meeting schedule. We devoted special nights to this and the meetings are going three or four hours every time we have a meeting.
What happens for the next phase of this? Like what, when you make a decision, is that it? Or is there something next after that?
If we approve the master plan, it'll go to a preliminary plan, which will hold a whole new set of conditions and there'll be more public hearings.
All right.
Thank you. Steve, Steve, could, Steve, could you just check on the date for the deadline? Because for some reason, I thought it was later than the end of February. I thought it was early March. Jamie?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, I, Jay's keeping track of the calendar, but the date I recall is March 9th. Is timeframe for our extension. Mister Parker's available this evening. And Jay, if it's something different than March 9th, please speak up.
That, that is correct. The last, the last special meeting, it was agreed that the decision deadline would be extended to March 9th.
Yeah, gives you time to make it to your regularly scheduled meeting.
Steve, may I briefly remind the public about the difference between comprehensive permit applications and regular applications?
Please, Amy.
I'll, I promise to try to be as brief as I can because I've said it before and the question regarding precedent, I would encourage members of the public to review the staff memo that's posted on the project website. On the project page on the town's website, a comprehensive permit is reviewed under different standards than a conventional subdivision or land development project, right? This is an application for a comprehensive permit in which at least 25% of the units are proposed as deed restricted to low and moderate income households, right? A conventional subdivision is, is different. So by state law, it is reviewed according to standards that bring affordable housing and the local and statewide need for affordable housing into focus. So if the question is what precedent does this set? And what ability do other property owners in the area have to develop their property in ways that don't line up with the standards and the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations? The answer is that with a comprehensive permit application, the developer has more wiggle room with the standards. And the planning board has to judge the application against special standards. So has to balance the, the regs and the zoning ordinance provisions that, that normally apply with the local and statewide need for affordable housing. Anyone can propose a comprehensive permit, but that's really the difference here. And I just want to remind everyone, and if you want a full explanation and if you want to see exactly what those standards are, please do review the memorandum prepared by staff.
Thank you, Amy. Jay, can we bring up the next hand? I believe it was Linda Hazard. Go ahead, Linda.
Hello, Don Hazard.
Okay.
21 Holden Road. The question I have is, let's say you, you got 12 units here and three of them have to be affordable housing units. Which units are they going to build first? And which ones are they going to start with? The reason I'm asking this is, let's say he starts with number 12, 11, 10, 9. Is, are any of those going to be affordable housing units? And he stops because you have another year, from what I understand, a year to get the other ones going again. Or, or it will be completed within a year. My question is, are any of them going to be the affordable housing? Which I think is, they should be. Because let's say he gets four of them done and he pulls out, he pulls out or goes bankrupt or whatever he wants to do. He's got his four, his four units in. He doesn't have any low-income housing there. What do you, what do you do about it then? I think he should do the affordable housing first before he starts building the richer ones.
Okay. Did you have any other question, Mister Hazard, before I have the applicant answer that?
No, that, that's all, that's all that's on my mind.
Yeah. And actually, Jamie or Jay, you may, might be able to answer that with how we have a schedule.
Mister Chairman, with regards to the proportionality, Rhode Island law requires that the affordable housing units be built in a proportional manner for the overall size of the development. So in essence, for every four units of three units of market rate, one unit of affordable will have to be built. So you can't build, to Mister Hazard's point, they can't build eight units market rate and then decide to start building the affordable. The affordable has to be built on a proportional manner. And they have to be available for occupancy at the same time that the market rate units come on the market. So and there's proportionality built into the law. And they are required to submit a plan that shows how they are going to accomplish that.
So the building permits wouldn't be issued, Mister Hazard, until they were in conformance with the schedule set for the building of the market rate and the affordable units.
Correct. Correct. So out of, if he builds four of the units, one of them has to be the moderate income. Is that, is that
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Jay, we have R and B up next.
Hello.
Hello, please identify yourself.
Yeah, Rick Nirocky, down at 101 Holden Road, been coming these, you know, longtime caller. Frequent meeting attendee. Alright, so, you know, I got, I got with what you're, you know, the, the, where we are at the stage. And, you know, I want to kind of address you guys as the board. And I'm trying to find reasons why you need to give a waiver here for what they're trying to build. I haven't seen this developer come and try to develop something that doesn't need waivers. But every time they come up here, they have, you know, it, it's, it's this condo complex that, that's seeking your waivers. And you don't, we don't have, like, you represent, I always felt like you represent the, the people that live on Holden Road, like, like Ms. Gerton, who who can't, won't be able to get into her basement to do her laundry. And the other people, like the Koch family there. And, and us down at 101 Holden Road, like, we're the ones that have been paying taxes all this time. And we're the ones that have been putting up with, you know, anything that we have to build. We, we stick to these stringent guidelines that, that the town has. But, you know, under, under the state law, 45, 53, 4, you know, when, when they're applying for relief under this legislation that will allow this builder to avoid the surrender process that South Kingstown imposes on builders, which are meant to protect us, the people of South Kingston. You know, thi- thi- this is, this is where I think the disconnect and, and I think the frustration from the people around here is that you haven't addressed, like, there, there are plenty of reasons why you don't have to give these waivers. There's, there's concerns about water, you know, runoff. That's just one of, like, it, it doesn't meet the overall village concrete plan from Matunic. This is, there is no condos in this, in this neighborhood. This will be the first condo complex placed in this neighborhood. And I understand that they're trying to circumvent the, the, these, these regulations in the zoning through the, the back door of affordable housing. And, and which, which is clearly not, which will clearly not be, you know, affordable housing in the true sense of it. Okay? No, and, 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 and it's really, it's funny because they come here and the public comment part, it is like we're helping them. We're actually helping this, this project alone because they take it into consideration what we're saying and they're, they're tweaking it. And then at the 11th hour, they, they change the plans that are on the site where they're now 32 feet high. That's, that's a tall, that's tall. That's tall. And you're talking about a deck that's only 15 and a feet away from the chain link fence that runs above, runs next to Mary's. There, there is, there is serious, you know, violations in the code. And the only way they're getting around it is, is through, it's through three, yeah, exactly, three affordable housings. And I'll tell you another thing, that, that, that Matunic Beach Road, that Pete Finnegan, or the owner of Ocean Mist, tried to, tried to save, is still being undermined. That, that is not going away. We knew, like, what we know now about the erosion in this community is not what we knew 100 years ago when it was starting to be developed. And like, we, we would be ignorant to overlook that. And I can tell in the future, and I hate, and, and this, this is the, like, a worst-case scenario. Is that this parcel of land may have to be taken by eminent domain so that Prospect Street would have, like, that community over there has access. Because in the, in the short future, there is a very good chance that Matunic Beach Road will be undermined and not have access to that area. And you're going to build condos. Yet, like, you're going, you're going to allow this? I, 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 my, my question is, why? To you, the board, not to the developers. I know what their, I know what their motivation is. Their motivation is, is strictly business. I, I, I have no problem with that, you know? People want to go out there, do what they do, make money. But not at my, not at the town's people expenses. We, we, we ask you, we ask you to enforce the laws that are currently there. And you are not really doing that. You're, you're, like, this is going on and on. And, and I believe your rationale was that if you deny it, it's going to go to the state and they're going to have to do this in Providence? Like, then, then so be it. But we, you know, then we have to have an argument as to why. And there are plenty of arguments. There are plenty of arguments as to why this project shouldn't go through. So I ask you, the board members, why would you seek these variants, like, these, these waivers? Why, why would you grant these to this developer?
You have any more questions before we turn it over to have that answered?
Sure. No, 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 I don't. But, but, but that's my point. Yeah. So, answer that, please.
I'll let staff answer that for you.
Mister Chairman, with regards to the question, I understand the residents frustration with the cop permit process. But the commission can't weigh in on how they feel during the public hearing process on whether they would vote in favor or against this and whether or not they're comfortable letting what's referred to as SHAB, make a decision if you were to deny the application and it wasn't. I think Amy Gones is much more qualified to absolutely weigh on, weigh in on this matter than I am.
I agree.
This is, this is Amy. It's, I'm, I, I don't, I don't know how many times I can say that the project is reviewed under different standards. And the planning board isn't seeking anything, right? The planning board is responding to what the applicant, applicant put in front of it, right? It has to take a vote. It has to review the application that was presented. And the state LMI housing, the Low and Moderate Income Housing Act was passed because, right or wrong, the General Assembly decided there's not enough affordable housing being built in Rhode Island. How do we encourage the production of more affordable housing? We allow developers to get more leeway on zoning ordinance standards. And we create a special, special standard and a special appellate body, the State Housing Appeals Board. So that's what the planning board is responding to. I think the board and staff in particular, the board hasn't expressed an opinion. The board hasn't voted on anything yet. Staff has been working with the applicant to ensure that if, if this project is approved, it's with carefully crafted conditions and with sensitivity to the neighborhood. Again, the master plan stage of approval is, is the first approval stage with further engineering and further details to come out and be revealed at the next preliminary plan stage. So, I mean, the, the, the planning board cannot deny this project for the same reasons that it might deny other projects. There are specific statutory reasons for denial. I believe it's staff's opinion that the application, you know, a denial would not be supported. It's not my place to express an opinion on the merits of the project. But legally, I can say I agree with that opinion. I think it'd be very, I think it would be difficult to deny this and have that denial be upheld by SHAB with the standard of review that they employ there.
So, 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 alright, so basically, Amy, you just told me that even if you deny it, they're going to overturn it. So might as well, like, then, then the, the whole point is mute.
So basically, we've just been helping
Right. I mean, there's no, there's no point. You, you, you won't deny it. So you won't deny it any, any waivers. Because your legal counsel is saying, yeah, you'll probably lose that. Correct?
Alright, let's move on to the next caller, please.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Alright, Carol, will you unmute yourself and state your name, please?
I'm Carol Ross, 101 Holden Road. I would like to just refer back to the last conversation with Amy. And one question that I have is, is, is that the reason that this project has gone under the comprehensive plan because it would have been denied under the other non-comprehensive plan? And my second question is for Mister Duhamel regarding the overflow at the far east end of Holden, back of my house in Holden Road. I, nobody has said too much about it, but on the map, it just says site. And I'm wondering if you could elaborate on that a little more.
Mister Chairman, do you want Mister Duhamel or Miss Gones to?
Chris is unmuted already, so let him answer the question. I think she's just referring to where you've identified the site in the in the plot location.
I, I had spoken earlier about the east watershed and how from 700 feet off of Matunic Beach Road, there's a high point and then the, the rest of the, the site drains to a swamp. A tidal swamp wetland. And, and then receiving salt on. So that, that area is regulated by C R M C. Any discharge to the wetlands would have to conform to C R M C requirements on the R I D M Somewhat Manual of 2015. And they require that the, that the first flush of runoff, the 1, 1.2-inch storm over all impervious Over all impervious surfaces, that that be captured and filtered. And then allowed to discharge to the wetland, so it removes the, the. The sediments, the nutrients with best management practices. To improve the stone on a discharge. One thing we can't do is flood. Any properties to the north at one oh one Holden Road. Or to the south with Mary Coppin's land, we have to direct all the runoff to the, to the tidal. Swamp on this, on this site so that there is no effect. Of flooding to, to any adjacent parcels, so that's. That's the standard that we, we must live by and that's what we'll be going by.
Chris, I think part of her question was east of that parking lot, that there would be no buildings placed there.
Oh, certainly, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm referring to.
We're gonna put a fence up so that there's no cut through, that was at the. Either the last public hearing or the one prior. There was concern that, that we'd be allowing people to use. This property to cut through, we, we are not, there was concern that we'd be improving that, that right of way, we are not. We're coming far away from it. If I, if I missed any other concerns, Mr. Chairman.
No, I think she was concerned that what was gonna happen on that section of the, of the parcel.
So it's gonna remain vacant and, and vegetated as it is today, it's not going to be cleared or, or.
So, it will, I might understand that it will look pretty much like it looks right now. Where will the, the water gonna be, the water receptacle or whatever it's gonna be called? Will it be hidden or is it, I'm, I'm not clear on exactly what is gonna contain the water.
Yeah, so we, we had in the, one of the initial designs, we had a drainage basin that was going to. Intercept the water and hold the water and discharge that, that first flush of runoff, so. We're going for a more expensive system, an infiltration system. So what you see on this current master plan will be the same amount of clearing. There won't be any clearing, it'll be that dense underbrush in the overstory of, of, of trees. That's going to remain on this property, we're not clearing anything.
So will there be like drainage pipes or something to drain it to the marsh or will it just go by?
It'll flow overland, it'll be intercepted and the first one point two inch will be infiltrated. And then beyond, it's filtered and infiltrated and beyond that, it'll overflow. Without pipes, without cutting swales or anything of that, it's, it won't be, it won't be. It won't be disturbed.
Thank you, Chris.
For Amy, I just wondered, my other question was, is the reason that this has gone into a comprehensive plan because. It would unlikely not pass if it had not?
Yeah, this is Amy, the, it's, it's comprehensive permit, right? Comprehensive plan is the document that lives above the zoning ordinance in terms of the hierarchy of local rules. Comprehensive permit is the specific type of application. You'd have to ask the developer, but yeah, I think the fair answer is it's market forces, right? A nonprofit developer, you can assume they're in the business of promoting affordable housing. A for-profit developer with respect to the applicant, like all developers, they're looking to make money, so. You'd have to ask the applicant why specifically they decided to submit a comprehensive permit application. There are a number of advantages to the developer, right? The planning board can grant variances that would otherwise be required to come from the zoning board. It's a quicker review process, I mean, there's a number of reasons why, but I think it comes down to, yes, flexibility with the. Zoning ordinance and a favorable permitting regime.
Thank you, Amy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cal. Jay, Tammy Grant is up next. Tammy, go ahead and identify yourself, please.
Tammy Grant, my property is seventy-six Holden. I have two questions and I don't know if one of them can be answered during this phase, but. I had asked previously about the height, is the height of this cottage still within the limits?
Yes, thirty-five feet is the maximum, they're, they're, right now showing thirty-two.
Okay, and my second question, which I don't know if it is at this stage, but it keeps coming up in my brain as far as. Um, the over, I hear HOAs being thrown out there, but it still comes back to, and now you have appeased. I was one of the ones who would question all the parking, knowing that there just isn't parking down there, so now there's gonna be a lot of parking. But who, once these are sold, there is nobody to determine who actually follows the rules, so.
There'll be a homeowners association of, of all those condominiums.
Who overlooks the homeowners? I've lived in an HOA and if you, I mean, basically, we, there were, I lived in, in a. An area prior to this, it was five, we were five houses and we could have made up our own rules as we went. So who overlooks, and I'm, I'm thinking in the future. Five years from now, these, these are now gonna be, you know, HOA could have get diminished. Who, who basically, at this point, can tell me that someone will overlook this property in HOAs? And it'll be consistent for years to come.
Well, Amy, you could probably answer. State losses.
This is Amy, a review of legal documents, including the bylaws of the HOA. Will be required as part of the permitting, that's typically done at the next stage, right? Legal documents are drawn up for the preliminary plan stage. This, the, any conditions of approval. Including the deed restriction, any number of conditions, whatever they're on the hook for, whatever they would be on the hook for. Could be enforced by the town. And the monitoring agency, which is a nonprofit agency that the developer would pay a monthly, I, I think it's monthly or yearly fee to. To enforce the specific conditions related to the affordability. And, and income limits and occupancy, so it's potentially enforced by the town and the. Now, if it's an HOA. Matter that doesn't involve the town, then we're not gonna have any say over that. But as far as conditions of approval, yes, the town would enforce any conditions of approval. In the same way that we would with any other development.
So this is more, one more question with that, based on what you said, are HOAs allowed in, in a affordable housing?
Yes, the answer is yes.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. Jay, Nathan Merrill. Nathan, unmute yourself and identify, please.
Hey, good evening, this is Nathaniel Merrill, one eighty-six South Whedon Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island. I don't live really close to here, I do live in Matunic, I think it's obvious that nobody wants this project the way it is. And the way it's being presented, I actually have some questions about the state level review for Amy. So if the town were to, or if the board and the town were to reject this comprehensive permit. And they were to appeal to the state, what are the criteria that the state would be judging it on? And what are the exceptions for, what are the criteria that the town could reject a permit on? Because it's just inconceivable to me that waterfront condos were what was imagined. When they wrote the affordable housing rules, so in her professional opinion. What would be the town's best case against these condos at the state level?
Yeah, I'm, I'll answer that question, this is Amy. The standards for review are set forth in the general laws. Title forty-five, chapter fifty-three, that's the LMI Housing Act. And forty-five dash fifty-three dash four sets forth required findings for approval. And correspondingly, the permissible reasons for denial. I'm not gonna read those, but they're in the law for anyone to review.
So can I, what would be our best case, what would, in your opinion? What would be those permissible denials that would, could apply to this project that, that would be useful? Because there's just no way that this affordable housing rules imagine waterfront condos, like, it's just inconceivable to me.
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm not gonna weigh in specifically on this, but.
You've weighed in for the project, I'd like you to weigh in, in our best case, if we were to go to the state. Because it's kind of like this threat, like, we're gonna get rejected at the state level, I'd like to know what's our, what would be our best case there?
She provides legal advice to the, to the council, to the planning board, excuse me.
Okay, that's just what I'm asking for the planning board to ask her for that when you get to that point, please.
Amy, maybe you can explain the concern the board has. In a denial such project, all these, the conditions that we've been talking about. And the improvements to the design we've been working on. If the board should deny this project and it went to SHAB on a, on a hearing. What would happen to all those ideas that we had and conditions of approval we discussed? If we deny the project and it goes to SHAB?
Yeah, and I want to clarify, when, when I express an opinion on a project, it's not a planning opinion. It's, it's not an opinion on the merits, it's an opinion of whether a decision would survive an appeal. That's what I'm here for, I'm not the planning expert. The, the board listens to the planning experts in the room, who are the planning staff. Through their education and training. So if, if this project were denied, SHAB would review it. SHAB would take into account the fact that, A, South Kingstown has not met the aspirational ten percent goal for affordable housing. B, they would take into account that currently we do not have an approved affordable housing plan, right? We're operating under a comprehensive plan that is a few years old, it is binding on us locally, but not binding at the state level. There's the new one under development, does not apply to this project. So SHAB would look at it, in its judgment, it would decide whether the project was consistent with local needs. Whether the local need for affordable housing outweighed any of the various concerns with traffic or the environment. And SHAB would have the power to approve it with either no conditions. Or whatever conditions it deemed reasonable. So in general, the best chance for a, a planning board to. Control how a comprehensive permit development is built and impose the conditions that it thinks is appropriate. Is to approve a project with conditions. It's very difficult to have a denial upheld by SHAB, it's not that it doesn't happen, it's just that it's difficult. Because SHAB, it was set up by the General Assembly to ensure that affordable housing projects. That might not otherwise be, A, proposed or B, approved, I mean, that's what, that's what they're there for, right? The, the, South Kingstown didn't pass that law, the, the General Assembly did, it's there like it or not. So, yeah, I think the best ch- chance for the planning board in this case to have input into how the project looks. Is to, if it thinks it's, you know, in its judgment, if it meets the standards for approval. Approve it with whatever reasonable conditions it deems appropriate.
Okay, Nathaniel.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone that hasn't spoken yet in the attendees that would like to speak? Please raise your hand. Okay, Jay, we have Jason. Go ahead, Jason, unmute yourself and identify. The unmute button, there you go.
How's it going? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, please state your name and for the record, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please state your name.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yep, you're a little broken up, but.
Okay. Jason Zalinski, thirteen Holden Road, how you guys doing tonight?
Good.
My question regards one of the previous questions. When, in regards to, yeah, the, the runoff of the water. So this is a natural topography within this plot of land. The water is gonna flow a certain direction. In the event that we're trying to move this water to. Areas and fill into the salt ponds and it needs to be cleaned. In the event of a power outage, what that water?
Okay, Mr. Duhamel?
It's, it's proposed to be a gravity system without need for any power. And it will be designed to CRM C D M regulations and reviewed by the town planner after, after the design. Town engineer after the design.
And that design that we presented at the preliminary stage?
The preliminary plan stage.
Okay. It looks like we lost Jason. Okay, next caller is MT twenty nineteen, MTK twenty nineteen. You, there you go.
Okay, go ahead. Yes. Name is John Summers, fifty-five Holden Road, our backyard abuts this development. And I had questions like, why do they move these condos a lot closer to each other? We got five of them, they'll be directly behind our house. And the way it was before, they were spread out somewhat and it wasn't like just a wall in back there. There were spaces between the buildings, it didn't look so bad in my estimation, but now they changed it. And also. Are these two, two stories or are they three? Because I don't really understand fully what a dormer is, is that something they put like that? A what?
Shed dormer.
What, I don't understand that, but maybe you can tell me that. And does that mean there'll be a third floor and if there is, is it livable up there space?
Okay, did you have any other questions before I turn it over to the applicant?
Yes, I'm rolling down, there's five cars that are gonna be parked six feet from our backyard. I was wondering if there was any reason why they couldn't move these parking spots to the south side of the road. And that would give some of the people a little break from the noise possibly. On, on Holden, because we spend a lot of time in our backyard and if. Cars beeping, their locks off and on, anytime of day or night, doors slamming. It's, it's not gonna be too pleasant for us and I'm pretty sure it would affect our property value. We're old and it doesn't really matter that much to us, but. Future people. And we live here year-round and our bedroom's on the backside of the house. So the way this looks, we're gonna have to move our bedroom to the front side of the house if we want any peace and quiet. And. Why would the buildings move from where they were before and the road moved? Because where they were before, I don't know what the big deal was about Mary's fence. Water's gonna go where it's gonna go and you guys were touting how you would have large gravel or. Stone underneath the road and that would take care of all your drainage, so I can't really see the full reasoning behind. Switching the road to the backside, because I thought it looked better the way it was before, but that's just my opinion. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Resnick, would you like to address those?
Sure, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and as the board knows and as the planning staff knows. There were changes in the plans and the location of the units based on the collaborative efforts of the developer and the staff. Mr. Duhamel, do you, do you want to discuss that again? I know you've addressed it a couple of times, but. If you could explain the genesis of moving the units around and also. How we came to the present parking orientation.
The, the, the units were pretty much in the same location. To Mr. Summers' house, the, the only difference from the very initial.
uh, submission was that the community leach field which stra- which straddles the property boundary of Mr. Summers', uh, is now being utilized for units five and six, but, but other than that, units one, two, three and four are pretty much the same, same exact spot. And I spoke earlier about, uh, the, the effect of, of, uh, parking and having a buffer with a six-foot solid fence and, and landscaping that would muffle the potential noises and, and not really thinking that there'd be any noise from traveling on the street, given the travel speeds of, uh, fifty, ten, fifty miles an hour in, in a residential area where everybody knows each other. So that's, I think this is a much better plan and provides the buffers that the, that the planning commission had been looking for, um, in, in that the, uh, that the abutters had been looking for. So I believe, I, I think this is a much better plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duhamel, um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I believe there is also a question as to, uh, what a dormer is. And I think Mr. D Simone, uh, can explain that architectural feature.
Uh, so yes, they are thirty-two feet tall and there is living space on the third level. Uh, what a dormer is, is a protrusion in the roof line to accommodate, uh, more living space without increasing the height of the overall roof. Um, and kind of giving it that two-floor feel as the roof will continue from the peak down to, uh, just above the second floor. And the dormer will come out to provide, uh, a little bit more living space on that third level, uh, that, that's basically what a dormer is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. D Simone.
All right, uh, Jay, it looks like Jason, uh, is back, he must have got cut off, so let's. Go ahead, Jason.
Hey, sorry about that, I apparently don't have great reception. Um, so I had a couple of questions. The first one was regarding the, I don't know how much you heard, so natural topography of the, uh, land. This parcel of land has, there's a natural runoff hill and then into the south into the Mary Carpenter's area, uh, and obviously into our properties. With that being said, um, there's talk of cleaning this water, um, on the, on the runoff, especially when you have cars and this much parking with the amount of oil, et cetera, that leaks out of these. Um, when you're talking about that, what happens in the event of a power outage? Uh, what measures are taken to clean that water or, um, be able to manage that water that's going into our salt ponds? Um, I, all the, the areas that we eat food from.
Uh, the engineer had stated, I apparently you didn't hear it, that it's all gravity-fed system.
Okay, so what makes it go the direction as opposed to the directions it goes naturally? Which would be to the east or west of, of the units and then south, which is into the Mary Carpenter's. What will make it flow into their natural gravity-fed, which would then have to go to the west? And no, I didn't hear that, sorry, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Duhamel, can you, uh?
Yeah, certainly, at the preliminary plan stage, we'll have details of proposed grading. It'll follow the same drainage patterns as the existing grading, it won't be altered, uh, significantly. Just, just, uh, in order to capture that runoff and, and treat it with the, uh, the best management practices. But, um, that will all be d- delineated at the next stage, the preliminary plan stage.
Sure, all right, so what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing from that is that the, all the runoff from the first, uh, four units and then the parking subsequent closest to Matunic Beach Road, all that runoff would actually then go to the west, um, which would be separate and into the area that already floods. Um, so in that preliminary, uh, whatever you're speaking of, that area hopefully is addressed as well. Am I assuming correctly in that?
Yes.
Now, the only, the only difference, uh, caveat I would say is we're not directing any surface runoff there. That'll be, uh, handled, a hundred-year storm will be handled at the point that it's, uh, generated at the infiltrate. Uh, we'll have infiltration structures at the, uh, roof leaders, at the, the, uh, the gutter line, which will all conform to the, the MC RMC regulations. We're not going to create a holding pond at the bottom, we're going to enhance what that pond already is, so we're not increasing any flooding.
Well, uh, uh, okay, and, but with your ru- uh, overflow parking in that area, w- would, what? Is there anything that cleans that water runoff?
Yeah, we, we have to treat that runoff.
So because there's not really much, I mean, the water table is pretty high.
And then submitted for approval and they'll be reviewed and if, if they're not acceptable, they don't meet the CRM C regulations, then uh, we'd have to change them, but that's, that's at the level.
Okay, and, and the second thing I had, just, uh, you know, when, when someone was out there, uh, might have been, uh, Steve or whoever. Um, the actual boundaries that are already marked, uh, on the properties were kind of called into question, which, um, obviously, you know, those boundaries that are kind of marked in the past, i- it's been done by all these board and board and zoning type of, uh, boards or, or, um, it's calling those into question. Um, the, the actual land survey, which would then be changed or altered or might be different than what we have in stakes that are already pre-existing in the, in the lots, showing where our, our property lines are, differ from what, uh, the builder is saying. Is there any way to get in, uh, precise markers to understand the actual lot size that, that they're trying to, uh, or where this, this proposal is, is utilizing?
Rich, maybe you could, uh, address that.
Can you repeat that question, please?
Yeah, so. Sorry, Steve. I'm concerned with the, the actual boundaries. There's, so when Steve was, uh, or whoever the, the builder is here, what was, um, was out, he basically indicated the actual boundary markers that are existing currently are kind of, uh, aren't what they're finding to be their, their boundaries that they're just designing this on. Um, which kind of calls into question all of our previous, uh, zoning and, and boards. Um, but with that being said, is there a way to make precise or find precise actual boundaries to see, uh, what actual parcel and plot size we're working with here? Uh, for this potential project?
You know, they, they will be, they will be, I don't know if it's been done already. I, I don't know what the classification survey this is, um, but they'll be asked for a class one survey or a survey to the class one level and, uh, also a class three, I guess, uh, maybe that's the terminology that's still being used. But, but the class one will require a boundary survey, so, you know, they'll have to, um, you know, uh, you know, really nail down where this boundary is and, uh, they'll be held to that during construction will be. Um, and, and then when, and also by the, you know, when, when the plans are, are developed final, they'll be using dimensions off of, uh, known points out there. So even during construction, we will be out there confirming that, that the installation is, is done per plan and, um, you know, subsequently still meets the, you know, the, the setback requirements. We're always concerned about setback. If, you, you know, building, if somebody proposes a building right on the setback line, it's always a very kind of scary proposition. Um, because, uh, any movement can, can put it out of, um, you know, the, the allowed zoning relief and, well, whatever it is, but. So we're going to be, we'll, we'll, um, we'll be keeping an eye on that as this project moves forward, but we'll be looking for a class one survey.
Mr. Chairman, we, we have submitted, we have completed one just, just for the record. And there's an iron pipe at the southwest corner of Mr. Zalinski's land that we picked up and it's in pretty good conformance, so. I, I think, I think we're in good shape.
Thank you, Chris. Jason, do you have any more questions?
Uh, negative, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, it's approaching nine o'clock, we have one more hand raised, so why don't we, uh, take Mary Ann's questions and then we'll, uh, we'll take a short break after that, so. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Hi, um, I just wanted to.
You just state your name for the record, please.
Oh, sure, it's Mary Ann Qualina, I live at eighty-seven Holden Road.
Thank you.
Um, my concern is the flip-flop of the driveway, um, towards the back of our property. But even more so, I have the same sort of concerns as Mr. Summers' voice, which is the fourteen parking lot, parking spaces there. I, I, there was another version of this, I think, uh, showing a fifteen-foot setback, um, which I'd almost prefer to see for all of us without those parking spaces there and maybe like trees all the way across. Um, so I, I just wanted to voice my concern about those fourteen spaces and maybe they could be put somewhere else and we could have more landscaping there and a real fifteen-foot setback before the drive, now that it's flip-flopped over. That was just a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it is nine o'clock, the, the board normally takes a five-minute break, so, uh, it's actually a couple of minutes after, so we'll come back about nine oh eight.
Okay.
And there she is. Okay. All right, planning board members, comments? We have a revised site plan before us. We've heard some more public comment.
I have a few questions.
Okay, go ahead, Maria.
Um, without the plan in front of us, there are sections on the most recent plan that we received two days ago, and I believe it's on the current plan as well, on the northern boundary of the site where you show trees and then there is some kind of symbol between the trees that looks like a mini berm. What is that?
It's not a berm. It's a, it's a pervious concrete structure that would intercept the surface runoff of the roadway and run to underground infiltration areas and there again, those have not been designed.
Okay, well, they, they weren't labeled on the plan, so it was a little difficult to see. Can you-
They're the same on every set of plans at this point.
Can you describe in greater detail or do you have a cross-section of the culvert that's on the western portion of the site?
No, this was something that was a concern of the town engineer that we would be damming up the, the, you know, the existing ponding area and I'm making very clear on the master plan that, you know, any water that accumulates there will be allowed to trans- traverse across the site.
So is it a trench or is it, I mean, usually I think of a culvert as something that goes underground that has, you know, either piping or allows water to flow underneath the surface. So exactly what is it?
There are culverts that are going to be designed to capture whatever or transfer whatever runoff is captured within that low area from north of the site on Holden Avenue, routed to this site and that'll continue in the same, same manner. There'll be less runoff from our site that gets there. There'll be less volume and runoff rate, but whatever, whatever remaining water, not from our site, our impervious surfaces, but whatever remaining water there is from the Holden properties will be captured there and brought across the site.
And do you envision any or anticipate any retaining walls on this site?
No, not at this point. This is, again, opened up. The, the suggestions made by, by South Kingsdale staff have opened up the site, created more green areas so that there's, if there is some, some grading, it can be lost without retaining walls. It's a pretty flat site running north to south. There's a rise. There was a dip in the, in the first three hundred feet, then a rise the next three hundred feet. So we'll be, we'll be pretty much equaling that, that existing grade that's out there.
So you don't anticipate any fill?
No, not at all.
Okay. Steve, that's all I have for questions.
Fill on the roadway at the going in at the low point in order to, you know, expand the, the, that pond, but that's the only area.
All right, thank you. Um, Steve, I, those were just the questions. I have comments, but I'll wait till other folks have opportunities to ask any additional questions.
Okay. Any other board members? Pam?
Yeah, if you could go back to that image again where the, the green trees are and, yeah, that one. I'm sorry, I may have missed it, but I'm just trying to understand in between the green trees, there's those trapezoids and what is that?
Hey, can you blow that up a bit? Thank you.
Yeah, what are, are those parking spaces right there?
Yes, eight by twenty parking spaces.
Okay.
Parking.
I, I was going to, you know, I, I'm, I'm hearing from the neighbors, you know, and I, I do think that, you know, moving it from the north to the south, you know, helped to solve some of the problems of safety and such on the, on the south side and the, the fact that there was the chain link fence between carpenters and so, you know, issues with regards to to light and such, but I'm also understanding from the neighbors on Holden. So I'm just trying to think about what might be some other alternatives and, you know, if the fence, you know, it sounded like they're not in favor of the fence being right there. I don't think that they would be in, I, I don't know if they would be in favor of not having the fence there, but I'm just trying to think about if the fence were moved a little bit south and you know, still on the property line of, of your client and then some of the, some vegetation was built on the north side of the fence, if that would be, if that would be another alternative, but I'm-
We, we could certainly look at that with John Carter. I'd prefer to do it at the next, next level. Look, you know, the one, one benefit, I didn't really explain this. The previous plan had the units fifteen feet off the north boundary, but within that fifteen foot was going to be a patio, a backyard patio. So there's going to be a lot more of a buffer with this plan to isolate any, any activity, any noise. It's not going to be congregation of, of people on the north, north boundary with this. Given the fence, a six-foot solid fence that John Carter had, had stated, you know, in the beginning and then having more landscaping in that area. So I, from a planning point of view, this, this is, this is much more desired.
And then on, on the south side then, so we still have the, the chain link fence. As I see it, there's no vegetated buffer there except for a side yard setback.
There is none now. That's where the current path is. If you've been on the site, it's, it's a grass path right along that fence. That area is going to be vegetated in a landscaping plan.
Okay, so this image, as you're showing, it does not have that at this point. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we need to, we need to do another landscape plan, hopefully at the preliminary level.
Okay, thank you. That's it for now.
But Chris, there is, there is a fence along that south side as well, correct?
Oh, there, there is already a six-foot or greater chain link fence.
Chris, you're not, you're not proposing a wooden fence there? You're leaving the chain link and just landscaping?
Uh, that's my understanding. It's, 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 it's a boundary fence. So I know that we have a right to move it or touch it.
Okay.
Um, so a follow-up to Pam's comment about the fencing on the northern portion of the lot. If you have that fence at grade without any vegetative material, then when flooding does occur, how will you prevent erosion where you're not, it's not, the soil will not get washed out below the fence?
That's a real good question. We'll have to provide details at the preliminary plan that, that shows no erosion. You know, a solid fence isn't, isn't embedded like a silt fence. There is, there is a, us, it's not put at grade because it would rot. So there, there is, there is room for drainage to fall under it and then having mulch and, and stone that would control any type of point discharge flow to have a a level spreader, if you will, along the, the north boundaries is typically what we would be looking for. You, you see that with landscaping beds?
I do like this revised site mainly because it moves the living units away from the Holden, Holden Road homeowners and you know, again, they will have some parking along that area and, but the separation from their property line to the front of the units is more than thirty-five feet. And I would think if anything, that's going to give them more privacy than if those units were placed where they originally were on the fifteen-foot setback. So, I mean, we're, we're trying to strike a balance here. I like the idea that there's going to be a fence. There's going to be some landscaping. If, maybe if the residents prefer the landscaping on their side of the, the fence, that could be discussed, but then you have a, a problem with trying to maintain that, that landscaping when you're fenced off from it.
That's what I was thinking.
That could be problematic. But, uh, and I, I like the idea that they dispersed the parking so that we don't have large parking lots. So, you know, I, I think we've seen some improvements from the previous designs. Comments from Paul or Joe? Anybody else? Susan?
A question and then maybe get to comments a little later, but what's the total square footage, living square footage of the house, Chris?
I'll defer to Steve. Do you have it, Steve?
I did the numbers the other day. The square footage comes in at around seventeen hundred square feet per unit, but that will be reduced going forward. Uh, I assume when I break up the shed dormer on the back, because we're going to lose some square footage there. And if you remember, the original square footage was sixteen hundred square feet. So it's, we're very close. I mean, we're, we're right there.
Um, then a question for Amy and this is just a hypothetical. But if we, a condition approval was no short-term rentals, is that something that is, considering the environmental concerns and the, is that, is that, is that a viable? Is that possible, Amy? Would that be reasonable?
This is Amy. I think that would be reasonable and also I think it would be really difficult to, to do short-term rentals in these units given the occupancy. Oh, I'm sorry, for the, for the market rate units?
Yes.
Um, yeah.
All units.
Okay, so that's, that's a tricky one because the LMI units, I don't think short-term rentals would work with the market rate units. I think what I would, what I would ask is, um, is, is that a condition that the board would oppose on, on any development project in this area? You know, is there something special about this development? I think if you can articulate why the condition's reasonable, um, but, you know, we don't typically impose that condition on, on subdivisions or land development projects to my knowledge. Um, so I, I guess I would say it's potentially reasonable, but I would want to be sure you articulated why it was needed.
Okay, and I'll wait till we get to the comment section to express why I think that may or may not be relevant. So Steve, I'm, I'm also with questions and when we get to the comments, oh. And then, then.
Uh, Susan, did you have your hand up?
I did. Hi, this is Susan. I have a couple of questions. At one of the earlier versions of this, I think it was pretty well recognized that a fire truck or other large rescue apparatus would have a really hard time maneuvering in this space. Has this, has this been approved by a fire department or has this changed in some way that you feel that a fire truck and ambulances and dump trucks and all kinds of other things can get in and out of this site without having to back up the length of the road?
It, it's the same, um, same design, just mirrored. We used to have a three-point turnaround that, that, that ended at the east of the site and then it came into the parking lot with the twenty-four-foot aisle that could, could make a three-point turn back onto the twenty-foot roadway. So we just flipped that. It's the same, the same plan that was reviewed by fire and, and approved by fire.
So a three-point turn would be in that parking lot that it's at the far east end of the road? That, that's a, that's a reasonable turnaround space for a ladder truck?
Yes, that's why it's extended at the end of it. It says twenty-four, twenty-foot to that area, twenty-four-foot aisle in between the parking stalls. The parking stalls are considered blocked. You know, somebody's already parked there. So the twenty-four-foot aisle is not blocked. Truck, truck can pull in that and then back up into the, the L of the end of the road and then pull, pull back out.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I'm sorry, looking at all my notes and I'm all scribbles over here. So I am concerned about the buildings and the ultimate appearance of the buildings looming over this neighborhood, looming three stories over Mary Carpenter's and looming blocking the view of the houses behind it. But you've also stated tonight that, I think the quote was, "We're going to try to make it more cottage-like than the plan you see before you." So it's going to change. So I'm finding it difficult to be able to understand what actually we're looking at since, I guess, I don't know, are all of these units identical in, in, in size and shape and then are the buildings identical and then are the units within them identical? And then how could we expect these designs to change before we see them again? I, my head is sort of spinning with the number of different renditions of this that we've seen and I'm not sure which ones to be looking at. And now they're changing again, which I think for me makes it really hard to make a a determination about how I feel about this because I'm, no, apologize, but it sounds like you're just kind of throwing things to the wall to see what sticks and I'm, I'm just so confused now by all the different versions of maps I have in front of me. So I guess I'd like to understand how we expect the latest addition of how this looks to change.
I, I would represent that at the next level, the plant preliminary plan level will have a lot more interaction to revise the plans by, by going to the dormer style, by having a smaller footprint. It's really opened the site up more. And that's what we're asking for review and approval now. But the exact building plan would be something that we'd have to, you know, spend more, more effort with, with the, with the town planner and ultimately the planning commission.
So we are approving this now and your, your number of units without really having a very clear understanding of what this is going to look like when you get to the next stage, after which we cannot go back and adjust the number of units. Is that what I'm understanding that we're doing here?
Yeah, we're, we're proposing twelve duplex units, three of which are affordable with the footprints that were, were representing and a a design, ultimate design that will be worked out with staff in the planning commission. But right now it's, there, there can be many things that change at the next level. That's true with every development.
Mr. Chairman, this is Paul Jordan. If I could just get a clarification, are we approving twelve units? Are we approving up to twelve units provided that the additional engineering, the site characteristics, the drainage, the VEM permitting can accommodate twelve? So if we were to approve, we're not necessarily locked into twelve. We're saying up to twelve site conditions permitting. Is that correct?
Yes, I misspoke. That's, that's more accurate. It's true. That's true with every development. I apologize.
So then I would like Amy to answer the question. If the verbiage is up to twelve, then what is the number that is vested?
The number is twelve. This is Amy. It's twelve vested units provided that the engineering, which comes out at the next stage supports it. So twelve, assuming that everything, you know, all the boxes can be checked at the next step. So we're approving twelve with that assumption.
That would be the engineering, not necessarily the building design.
Yeah, this, we, we do, the only additional authority that the board has with respect to aesthetics, architectural considerations, building design is, um, it's a, it's a standard of approval at this stage and at the next stage that the LMI units be compatible in architectural style and size and architectural style to the market rate units. So again, remember that the purpose of the act is, is to focus us all in on affordable housing. It's not intended to give the board, you know, greater architectural review than they would ordinarily have, but you do need to review architectural style to the extent that you're ensuring compatibility between the two different unit classes. between the two different unit classes.
Sorry, can I ask a follow-up question? Can I confirm that at this point, all units are identical?
So, let me just, I want to read it from the statute, because I didn't use the right word. I said size when I should have said scale.
No, Amy, I understand that, but I think that we've received drawings of one building and one floor plan. Is that the model that will be used in every unit at this? Is that the plan to use that model for every unit? That floor plan, that look of that building, will they all be identical?
Yes. Mr. D. Simone shaking his head yes. Staff has had a few meetings, conversations with Mr. D. Simone about the bulk and scale of the buildings. And I think he submitted information tonight saying he is willing to, in essence, revisit that bulk and scale, look at what the planning board is working on with regards to architectural standards associated with the cottage, and perhaps make them more in tune with... As Amy has stated, as legal guidance, within the comprehensive permit process, the commission only can review whether the light quality between the market rate and LMI. We have an applicant who has stated tonight is willing, what appears to be willing to work with the planning board with regards to the style and architecture, which could include slight variations between the six different units. It's my understanding at this point in time, his intent was to replicate that architecture six times. Mr. D. Simone, if you could clarify that?
Yes, well said. That's accurate. Right now, our intent, obviously, from the plan in front of you, is every unit is identical. What I discussed with Mr. Rabbit was the possibility of adding some architectural changes, primarily to the exterior of some of the buildings, to vary their appearance as one monolithic condo development. And we're going to look into that seriously and into your cottage plans, as I said earlier. And so, yes, they are identical now, and the insides will probably remain identical, barring like a dormer in a different place than another place. The square footages should be the same. And yes, it's our intention for them to be identical. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question for Mr. D. Simone. Exterior treatment, could the buildings be different colors? It seems like that would help break up.
Yes, certainly, they could be different colors. We might offer two floor plans with, you know, similar square footage, but with different configurations. And obviously, we'll present all of that, but yes, I have no problem with them varying in color.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking so much about the floor plan. It's just sort of breaking up that. I think the color could help a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a great idea.
Hey, Steve. We're having a problem with your voice. You sound like you inhaled a helium balloon.
Or like one of the chipmunks.
Not working.
It's not better.
Steve, you might want to log out and log back in.
It's not as bad as the cat lawyer.
Amy, I'm sure that went around in your circles.
Oh, yes, it did.
Maybe call in with the phone?
You might have to implement Article 25.
Call in with your phone number.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right, so, Amy. Susan asked about sightline views and the blockage of those views. Do we have any ordinances that govern that?
I'm not familiar with them. I'm going to ask Rich Bourbonay to comment on that. I will say generally, if we do have any ordinances on that, you know, the ordinances are going to have to be satisfied.
Rich?
Are we talking about at the access?
Now, Susan was concerned that the buildings were going to block the views from Holden Road residents, I believe.
Well, I think that, yeah, it's different.
I'm sorry.
We have a couple of things. We're also talking about stopping site distance.
Yeah.
But no, we do not have an ordinance in regard to that, although I do believe that... Was there anything I saw recently? Jamie, you may have information on that. The sightlines through these buildings, or we do not have any ordinance on that.
And I'm sorry. I apologize. I misunderstood the question.
That's why I asked, Amy, yeah.
Yes, in Rhode Island, there is no right to a view unless any of these abutting property owners have what's known as a view easement, which would be in their deed. There's no right to a view under Rhode Island law.
Okay. Jamie, did you have some information on the view between the buildings? You're muted.
Jay unmuted me. I'm sorry, muted me. The only thing we looked at real quick, and I think a few of the members of the audience articulated it tonight. The units primarily affect three abutting properties. Jay, if you can put by unit one and two, point to that house on the lot there, that their views in an easterly direction would not be obscured by the development. Again, their view sheds potentially change a little bit, but they're also looking at a relatively heavily vegetated site with both mature, some mature canopy as well as understory. And again, that will be modified. They would have a unit, a view between units two and three, skewed view between units four and five. And then, the unit in the middle, again, would have obscured views, but still between six and seven, eight and nine, ten and eleven. And then, as we had in an easterly direction, the third house, that would be most affected by the location of the twelve units. Their westerly views would not be obscured, but their southern and southern views would be partially obscured. Again, anticipating that the site was mowed as grass. You have a condition out there with, again, some mature canopy as well as understory site. So, you know, the same could be said that the homes on the northern side of Holden Road, when the homes on the southern side of Holden Road, their views were obscured as well as development over time at Mary Carpenter's. If you to the rear of Mary Carpenter, your views are obscured by units on the southerly side of your unit. Again, it's focused primarily to those three residential units. It doesn't mean that if the two units to the east of those three have some partial views to the southeast, that they may also possibly be obscured, but the primary focus when we looked at this was the three units in the middle of Holden Road. Also, understanding to leave counsel's point that there is no law in Rhode Island with regards to an individual's rights to a view, unless that view was deeded in the form of an easement historically. And there are, I'm aware of some properties in the westerly area who actually have view shed easements across property. And some of those are perpetual, and others are literally year to year, and they have to be purchased. But again, we did look at it, you know, really, from the planner's side of me looked at it, but also the regulatory side understood that it's something the commission perhaps doesn't have the ability to condition approval, that the views are maintained.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, I guess we're looking for comments. We've had questions.
Steve, I have a few comments. So, I do appreciate staff's effort to make changes to the plan and try to work with this applicant. However, my concern is that the changes do not lessen the impact to the site. The fact that we have the particular waivers that are being requested are emblematic of their inability to fit a proposal on such a constrained site. As everyone is aware, multifamily housing is not allowed in R-20. The issues that have come up time and time again, flooding. Every member of the planning board had concerns about flooding that was stated in our January meeting. There have been an enormous number of concerns from community members, many with multi-generational ownership and ties to the Matunik area. The mapping of the area demonstrate the vulnerability of the site to storm surge and events compounded by the change in sea level rise due to climate change. This is referred to in our Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Matunik Village Plan, our Comprehensive Plan, and the SAMP. And those storm events are not, those are essentially sea level rise, not scenarios for rainfall events and the flooding that's been experienced by the residents in the area. And we have received a high volume of testimony, written, verbal, and video related to continued and severe flooding in the area. The changes to the plan layout, really, in my opinion, don't lessen the impact to the site. And specifically, the questions and concerns about the issues, in my opinion, have not been satisfactorily addressed. And the problem is that if they have not been addressed sufficiently at master plan, it makes it very difficult for the board to make a decision that we know will vest them in density and layout. There are standards, as Amy has referred to. I'm looking at a legal memo that lists some of the reasons for denial. The first one that I think is relevant is that there will be no significant negative environmental impacts from the proposed development, as shown on the final plan, with all required conditions for approval. If we don't have sufficient information about what the impacts may be, then it makes it very difficult to condition the approval. And it remains the applicant's burden to prove, as we have been told time and time again. And this standard should not be applied any differently than it would be for a conventional application. The other area of criteria is that there will be no significant negative impacts on the health, safety, and of current or future residents of the community in areas, including but not limited to safe circulation of pedestrian and vehicular traffic, provision of emergency services, sewage disposal, availability of potable water, adequate surface water runoff, and the preservation of natural, historical, or cultural features that contribute to the attractiveness of the community. Again, this inquiry goes beyond because of the list of impacts that may be considered. And again, it remains the applicant's burden to prove, and the standard should not be applied any differently than a conventional one. I am very uncomfortable with a motion that will vest the plan as it currently stands. As I stated earlier in the meeting, it has made it difficult for both the board and the public to have revisions at the last minute before the meeting. I think it makes it harder to really look at any revisions and try to come up with any criteria that could mitigate the impacts. At the previous meeting, I also suggested having a peer review. I feel that, and we have used this allowance in previous projects, a peer review is best utilized at master plan when you can get the information about the impacts from an unbiased source that will then help you to make a determination going forward prior to getting into preliminary, where basically it's too late to make a lot of changes. You might be able to look at some engineering details as to how a detention pond may be laid out. You may be able to look at some landscaping details, but the major impacts will not be able to be addressed at preliminary. So, those are my concerns. If I were to have to approve something going forward, it would be my suggestion that the yield plan, which is six units, that the number be limited to six with the burden of the applicant to prove to the board at the preliminary stage of review that more than six units are viable from an environmental, safety, all the criteria that I just listed. So...
Thank you, Maria. Other comments from board members?
I would just like to know if what Maria just proposed is an option. I guess I'm looking to Amy to help me out with the answer to that.
Well, let's get comments from the board members first, and then she can fill in. Pam?
Just, I agree with Maria on those clear comments about the concerns. And I guess my question to that comment, and maybe it's answered when Paul gets answered, is,
Okay.
Maria, what was, when you say six? Was there, what was the, remind us what the six was based on?
The six was based on the yield plan.
Thank you.
Joe?
So, my concerns are the same as they were before, which is primarily the density and the flooding or the drainage. But I'll maybe restate them in the context of what we saw tonight. As far as the density goes, we had previously seen from the applicant that a yield plan would yield six. And we haven't heard anything from staff that that's not true, so I'll go along with that. So, that means that for this comprehensive permit, they're asking for six additional units. Three of those would be LMI, and three would be market rate. That may be a little higher than what we've seen on some of our other comprehensive permits, but not unrealistically high. Now, previously, the applicant has tried to mitigate that, or he's talked about mitigating that, and put that in reference of, one was that they were limited to two bedrooms, and a yield plan even with six could have the same number of bedrooms, because those units could possibly have one bedrooms each. So, they were, they were keeping the number of bedrooms down. And then, secondly, that the size of those properties... Or secondly, that the density, even with that at twelve, was not unlike some of the neighboring properties. So, that's what we heard in the past. I'm a little concerned with the size of the building. Seventeen hundred square feet truthfully doesn't lend itself to a two bedroom. You know, seventeen hundred is in now you're in the range of a three or four bedroom house. So I have I have concerns there. And then also the additional parking. So I don't, I don't find the size that's being proposed and the parking to be consistent with how they said they are mitigating the impacts of the additional density. So that's that's one concern. And then the second concern is the drainage. I also like to see a peer review. I think it could be done at the preliminary stage of looking at the drainage issues and maybe making some independent recommendations on how to mitigate those flooding issues.
Okay, thank you. Susan?
I would like to sort of second all of Maria's comments. I wish I was as eloquent as Maria in stating my thoughts, but I can try. I think one of the things that's really concerning to me is whether or not this project fits into the Matunik Village Comprehensive Plan that we have. And I was looking at some of the text today and it says the primary concern was the need to address preservation of the essence or aesthetics of the village. Designing for aesthetics generally includes buildings and other various architectural elements that help to maintain and reinforce the traditional summer resort heritage of Matunik. Of particular concern within the core area of Matunik is the regulation of building size, height, and scale or massing in order to maintain the traditional essence of the village. And when I see the the design here, to me, I don't feel like this is falling within the essence of Matunik Village. And so I really do question whether or not this fits into our comp plan for Matunik Village. Secondly, I'm concerned about this land has been deemed as developed beyond carrying capacity and a special area management plan because of its environmental sensitive space. And I think because, if my understanding was because of that, we need to look at reducing density of any building on these lands. And we are at least doubling a yield plan, not even counting the fact that it's an environmentally sensitive area on lands developed beyond carrying capacity. And then I wonder about the yield plan where the yield plan that I just saw shows a secondary access road coming in basically across a wetland to make a separate parking area to be able to fit a third, you know, to fit a third lot in there. It meant building a road where there's only a road on paper and then going across a wetland to access it. And I thought my understanding of yield plan was to work within the environmental constraints of a site. What would that yield be? Not accessing across a wetland space. I I don't think I understand a yield plan if if your your access to the space can be across a fragmities. So I don't understand that, but to me, this project seems too big, it doesn't fit Matunik, it's changing the nature of Matunik. As one of the callers said earlier, there's no condos in Matunik, that's not what Matunik's all about. And this is to me, just aesthetically doesn't fit Matunik. So I'm really struggling with accepting this project the way it is. And a number of the residents on Holden Road talked about, you know, there's twenty feet between the buildings, I'll lose my vision of the sea. And and I get it, that's, you know, not a right by law, but I guess in spirit, it's a, it's a shame to have the building so close together that for all intents and purposes, it's going to look like a big three-story wall looming over Mary Carpenter's Beach, which are all little three hundred foot, one-story bungalows. And then there's this, and then the site is on a hill, so it's five feet above or eight feet above Mary Carpenter's. And then it's thirty something stories, thirty something feet high. It is going to look like the Great Wall of China over Mary Carpenter Beach. And I guess that just makes me really sad. And so, yeah, those are my comments. Thanks.
Hey, thank you, Susan. I mean, I I share a lot of the concerns. I mean, we've, from what this project originally was proposed at to where we're at today, I think we're at a better design. Like Joe stated, the density of this development, I don't think is far out of line with Matunik. If I think Jamie even provided us, he picked up Holden Road and dropped it onto this site, showing the same density. If you look around some of the surrounding streets, community road or street and then Atlantic Avenue, there's been a lot of reconstruction of older homes there that are very big homes now. So much bigger than seventeen hundred square feet. So what we originally thought was the village of Matunik and the small cottages really isn't, there's some pockets of it, but a lot of those older streets, the homes are being bought and and rehabbed and and increased in size. So, you know, I'm, the size of the units isn't my major concern. But, you know, we talked about beyond carrying capacity. CRMC issued a letter saying that it's the lot is suitable for residential development. And I was taught if you were beyond carrying capacity, that it would have been much stronger language. There isn't. So, I mean, they didn't really, they set up some conditions of what the applicant must meet, but they didn't say that this site wasn't developable, which is surprising to me. So again, you know, in a if they want to appeal it, you you can't say, well, CRMC said the site isn't suitable. We had a traffic engineer said this, you know, little the impact of this type of development on the Tonic Beach Road. They have the sightlines to provide safe egress. So again, we can't say that it's a traffic issue. The Conservation Committee has approved this development. So again, we have in Rhode Island Historical Preservation said there's no significant impact on cultural resources of this, by this development. We have to take all this into consideration if this goes to SHAB because I don't see how with all the evidence that's been documented here, that we're gonna, we're gonna wind in court. And and I I don't like to see the town have to go to court every time we make a decision. It's not fair to the taxpayers. Maria, you're muted.
With regard to your comment about adjacent property and density and zoning, some, and I would say much of this area was plotted fifty, seventy years ago. So some of it predates the zoning ordinance, and I think it's tough to make a comparison there. Also, CRMC, while they have their own criteria and they deem certain land develop beyond caring capacity, capacity, they generally do not override town zoning. They have a specific set of criteria that they look at. So that wouldn't be something that would necessarily come from them in this situation unless they you know, utilized other, you know, some of their other criteria to make a determination. They're not going to say anything about what something is zoned or what some somebody may present. And it's also my understanding that their their review was a preliminary determination, not a thorough or complete review. So it seems as though that may still be something that's outstanding.
Well, and and that's fine, and let's put that in a condition of approval, that they have to, you know, get approval from CRMC. I mean, same thing on the engineering, you're asking, you don't have enough information. The laws, the comprehensive permit law says they don't have to provide that right now. So we we can't say that they, we don't have enough information on the engineering for drainage or flooding because it hasn't been fully designed and and presented yet.
Well, there's more than just the engineering details. I mean, it's all these varied concerns, especially the flooding issue. And again, it is the burden of the applicant.
But is it the burden, Amy, at the, at this stage, or is it at preliminary for this?
This is Amy. I hope this will help and maybe it will, maybe it won't, but I'm going to give it a shot. The burden is the applicants at each stage of review to put forward the information they need to convince you that the standards have been met. It's the quantum of proof that differs, right? And the, and you know, we're under the LMI Housing Act, but it refers back to the Development Review Act for the procedure. And the master plan statute speaks to information, whereas the preliminary plan statute speaks to, you know, engineering. Basically, you need enough information to satisfy you at this stage that the standards have been met. And then you're looking at the project again, you know, in a more detailed fashion. And and you know, maybe you'll say through a magnifying glass or through a microscope. But then it's time for the applicant to put their money where their mouth is. The idea being that the applicant, the developer is not going to proceed with that expensive engineering unless they are able to secure financing for the project, which they're not going to get until they pass go on the master plan stage. So it's this, it's, the burden is the same, it's on the developer. It's just by design, the law requires a lesser quantum of proof. That doesn't mean, you know, you should take the developer's word for it. That's why he has a team of experts here. But, you know, you just, you want to be careful that you're not requiring the developer to present something at master plan that they will absolutely be required to provide a preliminary plan. You know, and depending on the nature of the project and depending on your own knowledge of the area and what the residents have have articulated throughout the public hearing, you know, you may require more or less. And here we've got the traffic study, take it for what it's worth. We've heard, you know, we've, we've heard criticism, that's in your judgment. You know, many cases, you don't see a traffic study either A, until preliminary, or B, maybe not for a project with twelve units. You know, it's, it's in your judgment, but I would just caution you. We want to be careful that we're not applying a preliminary plan standard of review or lends to a master plan application.
Thank you, Amy. Paul? You're muted, Paul. Your hand was up, that's why.
Yeah, I'm all set, thanks.
Okay. All right, staff, have anything to add?
Just, Mr. Chairman, probably a question for Amy. Again, good discussion. Makes staff think, makes us work. Makes us curious of the process as it relates to any motion that the commission makes and the appropriate wording for any particular motion. So with, I guess, Ms. Chairman, again, my question's probably for Amy, that there were a lot of statements made with regards to community character and correlation with the town's comprehensive community plan. The units are too big than the abutting neighborhood, they're different, they're taller, the other homes are smaller, yet some of them are smaller and more denser. It's my understanding in reviewing the LMI under the comp permit that a lot of the things that the board members are extremely concerned about, including staff, but they're perhaps not something that they can contemplate on the negative side of a potential denial reason under the comp permit process. Did you weigh in on that, Amy? That, you know, boards brought up some really good points, just from a legal skin point. Are they valid with regards to their approval authority or denial authority?
This is Amy. As you know, as the board knows, the statute sets forward, sets forth for permissible reasons for denial. And if any of those reasons are found, you could deny the application. It's not like the required findings where they must all be satisfied. So one of those permissible reasons for denial under the statute is that the proposal is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. I, you know, that's the judgment of the board, right? You have staff's opinion, staff's available to you to give an opinion. You have you know, the testimony of the applicant, you have have to weigh that against the testimony of the public and your own opinions. So incompatibility with the comp plan is a permissible reason for denial. Just remember, though, if you, if you deny on that basis, when SHAB reviews the project, they get to balance your opinion of the comprehensive plan. They they basically get to make that call for themselves. You're more familiar with the comprehensive plan for the town of South Kingstown than they are. I I think both this board and SHAB is concerned about affordable housing and and the need for it. But SHAB's job is to place that priority, is to, you know, make affordable housing priority number one.
Amy, I don't have it in front of me, but my understanding is, is that if they're asking for a zoning variance, that the board needs to weigh the benefits of the additional housing and the need for additional housing versus the impacts of development.
Yeah, the the statutory language and one of the required findings for approval is that the proposed development complies with the zoning ordinance and subregs and or where those regulations or ordinances are expressly varied or waived. Local concerns that have been affected by the relief granted do not outweigh the state and local need for low and moderate housing. So you are required to do that balancing test as well.
And typically, how we do that is place conditions of approval that would mitigate the impacts. Correct, I mean, that's how we typically, or that is one of the ways of doing it.
Correct.
Amy, does, will SHAB recognize a comprehensive plan because it's expired?
SHAB, the significance of a comprehensive plan that is expired, which ours is, right, I believe it was adopted in 2014 and state approval at the time was three years. So it expired in 2017, now it's a ten-year approval. So when sometime during 2021, the council, I assume, will adopt the draft comprehensive plan, that'll be good for ten years, but at this point, we are operating under an old plan that is binding on the town locally, but not binding on state agencies. SHAB is an agency of the state. The Affordable Housing Plan contained within the Comprehensive Plan is not considered approved because it, because state approval has expired. So SHAB will review, SHAB would review a denial under the lens of the 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 part of the statute that says if the town does not have an approved affordable housing plan, was the decision reasonable and consistent with local needs? So again, there's no definition in the statute of what reasonable and consistent with local needs is. That means it's whatever SHAB thinks it means.
And just to reiterate, I I did mention the comprehensive plan, but moreover, the fact that this site has shown to have significant constraints with, you know, regard to environment, safety and well-being impacts, I believe that this board has an obligation to ensure and safeguard the safety of current and future residents. So things like flooding, potential loss of property and possessions, financial burden related to some of these negative impacts, coastal threats. It seems to me that those would also be a part and parcel of any motion.
Well, I think at this point, we we've had spent significant time on on the public, public hearing. I think we should close the public hearing and move forward discussion and decide which direction we're going to go.
Well, I'll move to close the public hearing, just get the motion on the table.
Okay. A motion from Paul, I have, is that a second, Susan, or are you raising your hand for a question?
Sorry, I have a question. So if you're closing the public hearing right now, then we're going to vote tonight on whether to approve this?
No, we, not necessarily, we still have another meeting.
So we had the plan change seriously twice this week. It's only, it's, and it's, and it's only Thursday. If this changes again significantly, I feel like maybe we should get, maybe have at least a brief I feel like maybe we should get, maybe have at least a brief public comment next time, because things might be entirely different the next time we come and visit this. And I think it would be unfair to the, to the public not to be able to look at the new plan and talk about what they need to talk about.
Well, if we close a public hearing, they wouldn't be able to submit another plan, would they, Amy?
They would, this is Amy, they'd be able to submit it, but you'd have to reopen the public hearing to provide an opportunity for comment on the revisions.
I mean, at some point, we've got to close, I mean, we've taken hours of testimony, and yes, they did just present this plan, we've, we've had, you know. Two hours, two and a half hours of testimony again from them tonight. You know, we can't really uh try to discuss and form a motion. If the public hearing is still open and people are raising their hands and want to comment.
Well, seeing as the changes that have been made so close to the meeting, I mean, it is our job to hear. What people have to say, regardless of how many hours it takes, we have to be good listeners and we have to be able to evaluate things from. Um, our own perspective, the perspective of the public, the input from the applicant. I, I would, um, I would suggest that we leave it open.
Well, it's going to be hard to uh. Form a motion and discuss it and then vote on it in one night.
Well, then maybe um we should see if there are enough similar concerns. Um, based on what the board has said this evening, that a motion could be modified. Um, and given the fact that there may be additional changes, so that. Some of the concerns that the board has could be alleviated. Um, going into the preliminary stage of review, because remember, as we have recently been um informed of. The conceptual, as it stands, uh. Master plan, the layout and the density will be vested, so when we get to preliminary, it's highly unlikely that we'll be able to make. Any kind of significant changes other than minor engineering details or minor landscaping details, I just think folks should keep that in mind. And see if there's a way that the, that we can talk about how we might modify the proposal so that it is. More reasonable and um meet some of the criteria with the information that we now have. And allow for um better input at preliminary without tying us into something that we. Really can't stand behind at this point.
Well, are you saying?
Mr. Chairman, just quick clarity, you have a motion, so there was a motion, I didn't hear a second.
We haven't had a second.
There was a lot of discussion, so.
Yeah, we're still in discussion mode.
There wasn't a second yet, though, the second then discussion, so I don't know if the motion wants to be withdrawn or seconded.
I will withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Um. Are you talking about limit, if the engineering doesn't prove out, Maria, do you want to be able to reduce the number of units, is that the basis of that?
Well, like I said, yeah, if we use the yield plan, which was six units, I mean, this applicant has repeatedly used the term cottage. This does not bear any resemblance to a cottage design, by the way. Um, and I'm not just talking architecture, um, but. If we were to use the yield plan of six units and say that the yield plan, even, even though there may be some issues associated with that, as Susan pointed out. Um, that um, we. Disagree with the 12 units and at this point, we would um feel comfortable with 12 units. And then it is the burden of the applicants at the preliminary stage of review. To justify the rationale and convince the board that more than six units, whatever number that may be, um, is acceptable.
I, that's not what, I don't know, that's not what the applicants applied for. I mean, I could go along with, if they can't prove it with the engineering, if the flooding and, and the uh. Siding of the septic system, the uh onsite waste systems can't be placed, they can't control the uh. The, the sheet flow over the property. That, you know, to me would be limiting the number of units they can do, but.
We have disagreed with layout before on comprehensive permits.
But it was more about where the units were placed.
Nevertheless, it was still an issue of, of layout and design and site plan. And this way, I think people would be a lot more confident going forward into preliminary, and again. Then it would be very clear that the burden is upon the applicant, we could have peer review. We could have environmental information, flooding information that would give us the confidence. To either modify it um at preliminary or, you know, what, whatever might be presented at that stage of review. Just a suggestion I'm trying to make so that uh people can feel comfortable um going from master plan to preliminary.
I think like, as Joe stated, the, if the yield plan was six and with the affordable units added in the bonus. That puts us close to the 12, doesn't it, Jamie?
Yeah, uh, Ms. Chairman, I, I think the discussion's potentially valid, I would just ask Amy Gones to, to weigh in on, I think. What Maria get to, it, it's really whether you start with six or end up with 12, it's. Right now. And Maria, please correct me if I misspeak, um, that you're grappling with. The density of 12 units at the master, at the conceptual level with the information. That's required in the submission process.
Well, it's the impacts to the site based on the uh project with the 12 units and all the accompanying infrastructure.
And it, and you're struggling with the fact that you could come to the conclusion that 12's okay, or eight's okay, or 10's okay. But you don't have sufficient information to make that decision right now.
Yes.
So your concern is, is that you, if you vest the applicant in 12 units right now. Can that be undone, or is the, or do you reverse the burden? And vest them in six, which allows them to go perhaps up to 12. If they prove stormwater and primarily it's stormwater. And associated environmental issues with stormwater. Um, and flooding concerns can be addressed in the preliminary stages. Um, with that, I have two additional pieces of language potentially. That the board has brought up tonight with regards to landscaping. And that the application should modify the landscaping plan to incorporate the location of the access driveway while keeping the original intent and design and the criteria of the plan with the road on the south side. As a minimum, so that ties that original landscape plan in, into the, the slight modification. The second would potentially be that the app proposed architecture shall be modified to clearly articulate the applicant's statements that the units are intended to be two-bedroom units. That are not intended to accommodate a third bedroom and submit plans that reduce the overall bulk and scale of the units. And, and those are just two, listening to the discussion tonight of, of adding those items, and I'm, I'm doing that on the fly this evening. Um, it's more pertinent to the discussion on what is the ability of the board. With regards to the discussion on the vesting of density, Amy, and are there, are there any opportunities to? Okay, to uh. Address that at the preliminary phase.
Yeah, this is Amy, um. First, I want to make sure the board has the benefits of staff's opinion on um. What seems to be the, the main issue, which is um consistency with the comprehensive plan. Um, second, yes, as I've said. You, you vest density and layout when you approve a development at the master plan stage. And, and that vesting is valid into the preliminary stage, assuming that. Assuming that the evidence adduced at that stage of review support what was decided at master plan. It doesn't mean the planning board has the opportunity to take a second look at the decision. Unless something comes out that affects, you know, it, you, you find out that, um. You know, stormwater for 12 units, you know, can't, can't be mitigated on site, you know, the engineer's made a mistake. Or um, you know. Anything that comes out. As a result of the engineering that's done after the ma- master plan stage, yes, can, can affect vesting. But, you know, vesting has to mean something, right? It doesn't mean everything is up for discussion at the next stage. But I do want to make sure that if the board is going in the direction of a denial. You do so knowing what staff's opinion is on the project.
Amy, I think we were talking about modification to the motion so that isn't, it is not a denial, but it's. Having a different set of uh values and a, 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 again, going back to the yield plan of six, and I think that um. Uh, Jamie was spot on with the two suggestions that he had uh related to the um. Showing that the architecture is actually um intended to be two bedrooms and the landscaping, I didn't even. Go into landscaping like I usually do because there were so many other concerns that I felt were more significant.
Yeah, I, I just want to be clear, though, if the board. Does not approve 12 units at this stage, if you, if you have anything in your motion saying, you know, you're vested for six. That's going to be construed by them as a denial, and that's how they're going to frame it if they appeal to uh Shab, right? This is going to be kind of a, a, a redux of the fieldstone farms, the sidewalk condition. They will argue and Shab may or may not agree that um an approval for six, when the application requested 12, was an effective denial of the project.
Joe?
Um, it's obvious that we all have concerns and ultimately we need to. Spend a considerable amount of time on the conditions of, of approval tonight, and then obviously have time to. Review those once staff puts them down, articulates them. Um, so I, I guess I'm going back to, I think we should close out the public meeting, I think we should have considerable discussions and work out those conditions of approval. Um, and wherever that may be, maybe each of those conditions of approval, the board will weigh in and vote on. And then um, you know, move that so that the staff can compare a motion.
So I'll take that as a motion to close the public hearing, Joe.
Uh, yes, you may.
Do I have a second?
I will second that for discussion.
Second from Paul, any discussion? No further.
Oh, wait a minute, again, if based on tonight's discussion, this applicant comes back with some modifications. It might be more advisable to keep the public hearing open. However, if the board doesn't think that that is likely. And prefers to go forward with a discussion of a motion, then, you know, that, that's the other side of the coin.
Mr. Resnick, would you like to weigh in on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Uh, we're discussing closing the public hearing, do you uh expect to have any uh further revisions of the plan as presented to us?
No, there will be no new plans going, uh, we would respectfully request that the public uh hearing be closed. Um, I think we're verging on 18 hours at this point, um, and that would be our position, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Having said that, we have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing, Pam, will you take the role on that call?
Yes, I will, Paul Jordan.
Hi.
Steve Demossi.
Aye.
Joe Murphy.
Aye.
Susan Axelrod.
Aye.
Maria Mack.
Aye.
Pam Rubenoff.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, how would the board like to uh, would you like to go through the draft motion that staff has prepared? And add the uh, the language. Um, as we go.
Well, I don't have a hard copy of the most recent, the motion that was emailed to us. And I think that if we discuss it point by point. It should, it should start with a conversation about the yield plan and the six units and what we're going to be faced with or not at preliminary.
Jamie, you have any ideas how we can handle that?
Um, just bear with me, Mr. Chairman, as you've been talking, I've, I've been going through.
Crunching, okay.
That draft, that draft motion, um, as quickly as I can. Just bear with me. And again, the um, on the, the attachment A, draft motion on the Tunic Beach Road condominium project. Items one through. Are, are very similar, if not identical, to the original motion we gave the board a month ago. I think the key, I'll highlight item number nine, and Jay, can you, can you put that up on the screen for the board members?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, may I interject for one moment?
Go ahead, Mr. Resnick.
You know, I, I think it may make some sense um to uh allow um Mr. Duhamel and my client uh to confer with the planning department again. Uh, and perhaps address uh a motion at the next meeting. Uh, we've heard a lot more comments today, and I think it makes some sense. Um, we've come a long way, they've worked very well together, uh, and I think uh it would be beneficial to both. The town, the board members, the staff and my client to do that.
Well, we weren't planning on voting on a motion tonight, Mr. Resnick, but we, what we're discussing is the language that'll go into the motion. And I, I think the, the staff would like to have that.
Sure.
But I, I would be interested in knowing what Mr. Resnick had in mind as far as conversations with staff, because. Often more conversation and more communication leads to better results, so. Could you just say a little more?
I would say, I, I unfortunately um am not with my clients in the same room right now. Uh, we've heard a lot of comments this evening, um, and I think it worked very well in the past, allowing us to have an opportunity. Um, you obviously still have numerous concerns, uh, but many of your concerns, and I think many of the concerns of. The community and the board members have been addressed through the collaborative process of Mr. Duhamel, my client, uh, and the staff. And so that's my suggestion, I don't have any specifics for you at this moment. And surely, uh, if it's your purview, the board members may discuss whatever conditions you made this evening. But I think it would be a benefit to everybody involved to allow uh Mr. Duhamel and the staff and my client to have further discussions.
I'm, I'm not opposed to that idea, I just uh, I want board members to be comfortable that they've. Had their input with staff as far as what they may want to see um in a draft motion. And to get that out, because again, our timeline is, is, is very limited now. And I, we need to have some discussion so staff knows where we're coming from. Go ahead, Amy.
We have more than three weeks, right?
I, I was just going to say, let me, let me throw two things out there that may or may not work, one or both. One is you can ask the applicant to, to, if they're willing to consent to a short extension of the uh deadline. Um, two is, remember, ob- obviously there's a benefit to discussion while we're all on the same screen at least. But um, remember that staff, without um raising any open meetings concerns. Board members can communicate on an individual basis with staff. Um, so that is definitely an option to save some time and that perhaps at the next meeting. Staff could relate and even, you know, in advance of the next meeting, you know, things could be posted for public review. I just want to make sure we're aware that's still, you know, without um raising any open meetings concerns. Staff can confer individually with board members, we just want to make sure that we don't relate one board member's um. Views to another outside of an open meeting.
Thank you.
I like the idea of a short uh extension of the deadline.
The uh. The deadline runs out on March 9th, which is a Tuesday, if they could give us a two-day extension to the 11th. If they could give us a two day extension to the 11th, which is a Thursday.
Mr. Chairman, I would do it at least the following week. We do live in New England. Although we are zooming, but there always could be an issue with the weather.
Okay.
I wouldn't want you to have a meeting at 11 o'clock. You know, that could go with discussion past 11 and your deadline's at midnight that day. I think that's cutting it a little too tight. And again, if they're giving you an extension until, you know, the following Thursday.
Okay, so you're saying to schedule the meeting for the 11th, but have the deadline after that? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
And it would be, it would be useful to have a meeting where at the beginning of the meeting, we start discussion of a motion and the and the details thereof, rather than at 10:30 at night after we've been here for several hours. There's a benefit to that.
Maria, it was just that the staff was clearly informed on where we were coming from in their attempt to draft this motion, so.
I don't remember giving them any, I remember listing concerns, but I don't remember giving them a any kind of yea or nay as far as what, you know, what a motion might contain. I don't recall any discussion of a motion, just concerns about the project itself.
No, I said, that's what we were trying to develop tonight was to give this staff an idea where we're standing on the motion. As far as what we want in the motion.
And I think that's still beneficial, Steve, because that would give the applicant some better understanding of what conditions they'd be placed under and whether those are acceptable to them or whether they want to change their plan.
Yeah.
So I think it's a valid discussion still for tonight.
We have a half hour. And again, I so the first thing we need to do is ask the applicant to extend the deadline. If we want to give it another week, what do you say, the 18th of March? And we'll have a meeting on the 11th?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that, is it a 10 day extension approximately? I'm just trying to. And that would be fine with us, Mr. Chairman. We would provide that continuance.
Thank you for that, too. We appreciate that.
We put that in one motion.
Absolutely. And if I may, Ms. Mack, I think that you've seen throughout this process, we have a developer here that is willing to work with the board members, with the staff and with the community. This project has changed drastically since its inception, 24 to 12. And we are working with the staff. And I think you heard from Mr. De Simone today, who I would submit to you as a very genuine person. And I think will be working with neighbors and the staff. And that's why we're giving you the continuance, just as we have in previous matters. We want to work with the town, we want everybody to feel comfortable here, but we need a reasonable decision.
And and thank you, Mr. Resnick, for being open to that. Not every attorney representing a comprehensive permit is always very, what's the word? I'm trying to think of something other than nice, but nice to us. And, you know, there's sometimes an air of intimidation with these comprehensive permits. So it's appreciated that you're trying to work with us.
I thank you for that. And of course, we try to make our experts available. Mr. Duhamel's been here every night and will be here next time to answer any questions. And hopefully, and hopefully, we can, we can have a successful final meeting next time.
Okay, so I'll need a motion from to have our next meeting on March 11, 2021, and an extension granted by the applicant for the final decision by March 18, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Maria. I have a second from Joe. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just clarity, he granted a 10 day extension?
No, I was just trying to do the math, whatever.
I would just leave, if you can, Mr. Chairman, leave it at the 10 days and we'll do the math.
Okay, well, but our meeting, our meeting will be March 11, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Just for clarity that the applicant can.
So that motion was amended, agreeable, Maria?
Yes.
Second by Joe. Okay. All those in, Pam, go ahead.
Paul Jordan.
Aye.
Steve Demossi.
Aye.
Joe Murphy.
Aye.
Susan Axelrod.
Aye.
Maria Mack.
Aye.
Pam Rubenoff.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I think staff knows where I stand on the issue right now. For other board members that may have something specific, they want staff to include in the motion. Either please give it to them now or you can email, email them at a reasonable date so they can start working on this.
You're talking about the conditions of approval?
Yes.
So to go back to density, I would be okay with the 12 units if we have conditions that would mitigate the impacts to the surrounding areas. And again, the applicant had stated that it's only two bedrooms. It would be the same number of bedrooms that he could get out of a yield plan with six units. He had stated that it's consistent with the character because the density to the south of that is considerably higher, which is true. You mentioned that there's properties that's larger than that, that's true, but they're in areas that's lower density. So I would like to see conditions that mitigate the impacts by limiting the size and the number of parking. I think that would try to keep it more consistent with the neighboring properties. And I'd be looking for a size that's more consistent to a two bedroom, two bedroom unit. I think we, maybe in our cottage, maybe we call 1,200 or 1,250 square feet. And also the number of bedrooms. I have concern that it would be more than two bedrooms eventually, and there's really no way to control that. So again, I'd be okay with the 12 if there's conditions that mitigate those impacts.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
As I said before, I would like to see a an approval of six with with the criteria and concerns listed that need to be addressed at preliminary. In addition to that, I'd like to see a peer review by someone with advanced degrees in hydrology, drainage, coastal flooding issues that is that works in that area. I think that would help to give us potential confirmation of whether or not some of the mitigation methodology that's been suggested would be appropriate or effective and help us to look at how this this plan or a future plan might impact the site, given its constraints.
Okay.
This is Paul Jordan. I have a question, and I think Susan tried to address this earlier. But on page one of the draft motion, we have findings of fact that I think we've said several times tonight, we can't, we can't answer at the master plan stage. And these are that there will be no significant negative environmental impacts from the proposed development shown on the plans. We don't know that because we haven't done the engineering work yet, so I'm not sure.
Paul, let me interject here because if 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 you take that view of it, then nothing can be approved at the master plan stage. I want to repeat what I said about the master plan statute refers to information and the preliminary plan statute refers to engineering plans. So don't, don't take the view that, well, if we don't have the engineering, we can't satisfy the standard. Remember, it's just a lesser quantum of proof. You have to be satisfied that this that standard has been met, but you shouldn't require necessarily engineering plans at this stage of review to satisfy yourself.
I'm not asking to require that. I'm simply saying that what the language says is that we have found, as a matter of fact, that there are no significant negative environmental impacts. And I I don't, I don't know that I have. I don't think we have enough evidence to say that that's true. If the language has to be there, I'm okay with it. I'm just not sure why it would say that when we agree that we haven't got the information. I'm not saying that we should do it at this stage. I'm just not understanding why the language is there.
The the language is there because it would have to be there as an approval, right? That is one of the standards for approval.
I'll learn eventually.
Susan?
I'm looking at the draft motion which was circulated, and it had 12 different modifications on it or something like that. Are we going ahead and keeping these and having sort of a, I see some have already been satisfied, like in a fire truck turnaround? But are we going to keep whichever ones of these haven't been addressed yet?
Some of them are in there based on, like the mosquitoes mitigation was in there from the public comments. Some of the early meetings, so I would assume they're going to stay in there.
And Susan, I did keep a few of them, like the the fire apparatus turnaround, just so that it was clear that in the transition between master plan and preliminary plan, that you didn't lose sight of that. So if someone in the preliminary plan said, let's get rid of that 10 parking space on the easterly side, well, you're great, but you still have to satisfy the fire apparatus turnaround.
We've learned from history, it's better to put it in there.
That may seem redundant, but I thought they were critical to moving to the next phase.
And then my only other question about, we keep talking about the design of the buildings. They change, they're going to be kind of more cottagey, we're going to change the dormers. Is there anything that needs to go into the motion to ensure that they stay of a more cottagey size and style than what we have right now? Because what we have right now doesn't fit, I think, the spirit of what they stated they're trying to accomplish with dormers and architectural details and stuff. Does that go into into the?
We could ask for it, that they present a sketch at preliminary at the beginning. Instead of waiting till we have the first meeting, let's ask them when they come back to provide us a sketch of what they envision.
Okay.
I think, Mr. Chairman, that may be one of the reasons why the applicant has requested you to debate this motion and also continue the conversation with staff as it relates potentially to architecture. I did read the board some language that, you know, the applicant's proposed architecture shall be modified to clearly articulate the applicant's statements that the units are intended to be two bedroom units, are not intended to accommodate a third bedroom and submit plans that reduce the overall bulk and scale of the unit. That's driving, you know, my my wording there is that discussion of the applicant saying he's going to look at the the cottage side of the town's newer regulations without specifically saying that. But again, the ability to have the extension and have a conversation with the applicant should be able to vet that language better.
Okay.
I also.
Go ahead, Maria.
I think that there needs to be a reference to the the constraints of the site in the findings. And perhaps more than one.
So going back, we were just talking about, are we asking them to provide like an artist's rendering of the vision? For a unit?
We can.
And if we are, can we also ask for, not very complicated, but sort of an idea of what this whole unit will look like as opposed to? I guess if they're all identical, it doesn't matter, but if they're all going to be different, I would like to see sort of a vision of what the whole thing will look like. And is that appropriate to ask for?
We can ask.
Okay, thanks. Then I ask.
All right, any other comments? Pam?
I just wanted to note that at one point, the applicant indicated that they would work with Deborah Gerton on the fence and landscaping, and I'm not quite sure how to.
Good point. We should include that. All right. Staff have, Susan?
Sorry, there's been, there were a number of callers tonight who wanted to talk about the number of units in comparison to the number of parking spaces.
Yeah, I mean, we should have a discussion about that. I mean, we we've heard so much conversation, discussion from the abuddies about not having enough parking there. So the applicant added more parking, thinking that's what we heard, what we wanted. And so, and I think, Jamie, would you say the required number?
Originally, they were looking at two. I had discussions with the applicant about three per unit. Literally sat at the table with some modifications and sketches. And what you saw tonight was a little bit more than that. Again, the two bedroom units, if there's two people who are living there and employed, there's typically a two car household. You don't have access to public transit that far out. So again, at a minimum, you're looking at two. You need to accommodate guest parking just on a regular basis. So I think you're looking at potentially three. They have a little bit more than that, and then they have the grass overflow. So again, I would work with the applicant to potentially just get to be no more than three on hardened structure and then have the grass available for any overflow. But to everyone's point, you're to try and resolve one issue, you potentially create another. So you're finding, trying to find that balancing act between, you know, the the wishes of the neighborhood to not not have enough parking. And then to Maria's point, if you have so much parking, how does that affect stormwater management, too? So there is a balancing act there. And then maybe that some of those spaces convert from hard structure or pavement to grass and more overflow, but there's still area to accommodate those. Again, I would continue.
My preference would be a little bit lower, I think, a concern again about that third bedroom, but also concerned about having additional space for additional drainage, if it's found out that it's needed later on. I'd rather see it at two, or maybe two and a half. And then you could have some dedicated place for overflow parking. But that would be my preference, would be a lower number because of the impacts to the drainage.
I agree with Joe on that one, both the bedrooms and the parking. You know, when you think about what are, what is the potential for? This is a road, it's a 20 foot wide road, but it is a road, not a driveway. And what if you have cars up and down that roadway? Who is then responsible for this?
Well, I guess at some point, if it's a private road, would the town still be able to step in and say that they're not providing safe access to the property for emergency vehicles?
Mr. Chairman, I could have that discussion with them in essence that, you know, the plans say there's no parking there. But I, to the board members, kind of struggle with this is, you know, I've been fortunate or unfortunate to live in a condominium situation. And we had a garage and one parking spaces that were dedicated to our use. But whenever friends came over, they were, the development was grossly underparked as it was with guest parking. So what happens is you have all this informal parking everywhere, which then does jeopardize your ability to have emergency services access to site. So it's a balancing act that we would continue that discussion with the commission, understanding the board is also looking for that balance.
And and utilizing the grass pavers would at least help with infiltration as well.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can I just ask a quick question? I just, is this a private road or a public street? I actually don't know this.
I don't know if I can establish, it is going to be a private.
It's private?
A 20 feet wide, you bet it's private.
Okay.
Now, the re, and and if the commission members ask, can they reduce that? The reason it's at 20 feet is there's a National Fire Protection Code recommendation that any road to multifamily, which this would be classified under that code, has a minimum width of 20 feet for firefighting apparatus for a two way road. They're trying to also tick another box and meet a standard for for emergency service access.
Okay. Well, I think we've given staff a direction. If a member has something else they'd like to add, please, in the near future, email the planning board staff. And hopefully, staff, we can get a the draft motion back to us with ample time to review it before our next meeting. And hopefully, staff, we can get a uh, the draft motion back to us with ample time to review it before our next meeting.
That will be our goal.
And again, you, I understand you're gonna have to present it to the applicant as well, so they can. Maybe have some negotiation in that as well. So, okay, if there's no further discussion. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Move my Maria, second, by Susan. All those in favor, raise your hand.
We've still got ten minutes, I'm.
I, you know, Pam has pro- asked me not to go beyond eleven, and I don't want to take any chances.
And you know we're gonna make up for it at some point in time.
So, I, I think I saw six hands, so we had a unanimous decision and uh. We'll see you next uh, Wednesday, next meeting, twenty-third?
Tuesday to twenty-third.
Thursday.
Oh, okay.
That's right, special meeting on the eighteenth.
There we go. All right, all right, we'll see you then, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Night.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.